We don't usually get videotaped, so I just want to check with Dan that he can hear me and that everything is going okay. Okay, Dan? All right. Take attendance. Ed Burke.
Present.
Bob Hughes.
Here.
Pat Schwartz.
Here.
Linda Donovan. I'm here. And Gail Christman is here as well. We have three items on the agenda. We have Novella, the catering hall at the end of Tuilla Galain. How many people are here for Novella? The representative? Yes, thank you. Isn't there a representative? One? One person? No one from the public is here to speak to that issue? Okay. Then I think, would you mind if we put you, so that we don't inconvenience these folks anymore, if we put you after the public hearing for Park Point? Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I know, Joe, you're gone. We don't need you. I'm sorry, I just... Nope, don't need you. But thank you. Okay. We have a sign-up sheet over there for people who wish to speak at the public hearing for Park Point. And, Gail, maybe you'll, after everybody has a chance to sign up?
Yep.
Linda? I think you also have the representative.
Say that again?
I think the Park Point representative's here also.
Yeah. Hear them first, before the public? Might as well.
Do you want a quick overview or however you want to handle it?
Thank you.
If you want a quick overview again?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have a representative from Park Point who is here? Okay. Gentlemen.
Linda?
Okay.
The door is open. People need to get files.
The office door is open now?
I'll get people's files.
Thanks. Thank you.
Rich. Our secretary went on vacation. Bless her soul. You can see where it left us. Can't do without him.
How important she is.
Well, she is. She is.
I can remind her of this meeting.
Absolutely.
She'll see it on the video.
Is there somebody from Park Point who would like to give an overview of the proposal before we hear from the public? Or... And you want them to speak into the microphone at the podium?
Good evening.
Make sure you give your name and identify, you know.
Good evening. I'm Mike Simon with BME Associates. Doug Eldred, who is familiar with facing folks, is also on vacation. So, I've actually worked with Doug on the Park Point, New Falls project for the last several years. I also assisted in the preparation of the applications that are before this board this evening. We are seeking three variances for the project. The first of which is relative to building height. The code has a maximum building height of 35 feet. We are seeking five feet of relief and requesting 40 feet for our building heights. We are also looking for relief from code section relative to number of stories. We are asking...
Would you speak more directly into that?
Yes, I'm sorry. We are asking for relief from the number of stories. The code allows two and a half stories. We are seeking three stories, which would be a half a story above the code requirements. We are also seeking, the third variance is relative to the distance, minimum distance between the buildings. The code currently reads that you need to have twice the building height between buildings. So, that would mean on at least, one of the largest variance portions would be 80 feet. And our closest buildings would be 30 feet apart. We also have varying distances. Some are 50 feet, but again, the closest is 30 feet. I know that you've had these applications for some time. And I also did prepare, along with the applications, we also had provided some supplemental information. And I believe this board has, in fact, looked at that information on several occasions. And I would certainly be glad to go through any questions or answer any other questions you may have relative to the application this evening.
I do know that one question that had been raised earlier was the justification... Yes. Justification for the decreased distance between the buildings?
Yes.
How is that justified?
Yes. What we have explained here in the application is, as you know, we provided with the application a number of different layouts that were contemplated with the proposed development. As you, most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the site. There is some nice wooded area towards the back of the site. What we're trying to do is preserve as much of that green space and woods as possible and bring those buildings together. That would also create more of, more of a, call it almost like a village feeling. Rather than spacing these out and scattering them around the 50 acres and quote-unquote wasting a lot of that land, we felt it would be prudent to cluster the buildings, if you will. This would also allow us to create less infrastructure, less road, less water, sanitary sewer, things of that nature. And also, if, one of our points in here is that it would also decrease the amount of maintained lawn, and that would mean that they wouldn't have to use as much manpower and fuel and things of that nature to maintain large lawn areas around the buildings. So, that was documented within the application. And I don't know... Oh, yes. We also are avoiding the wetland, or we tried to minimize any encroachment into the wetland buffer. Although they are federal wetlands, they don't technically have a buffer. I know the town code does. And we're trying to avoid staying out of those buffer areas as much as possible as well. So, that allowed us to cluster them and try to, again, avoid the sensitive areas on the site.
And the fire department's opinion of this?
Yes. They, the fire department, the fire chief, there was a discussion. They do have apparatus, and we are providing allowable fire lanes, and they do feel comfortable with the distances between the buildings.
My understanding was because, you know, we certainly got information from them, too, that, that one of the major reasons is that with the fire suppressant devices that we have now...
That's correct. That's correct, Ms. Donovan. They do have, they will all be fully sprinklered, these buildings. And we have put fire hydrants in very strategic locations. We worked with the fire department to make sure those locations were acceptable to them. We also provided ample fire lanes throughout the development for them to respond.
Oh, the other thing I wanted to verify, too. I had been, have been told, informed that Wilmer Wright worked with the town's environmental consultant, Spider Barber, on this plan.
Yes. We have, BME has a wetland specialist in our office. He and Spider met on the site many times to talk about the sensitive areas and how best to protect those and create buffers around those sensitive wetland areas. And there is a letter that's included in the larger supplement that is directly from Mr. Barber, and it speaks to his corroboration, if you will, of how we planned and what we did on the site.
Ed?
Are you familiar with this packet? I guess I'd have to make a look at it.
Identify it for all of us.
I don't know. There's no data. This isn't the factual background. This was one of the original, I think, pieces that added that with the narrative. That does not look familiar to me without a... Okay. Yes, that looks like part of the...
Yes. I was going through this, hoping that somebody was going to show, and I appreciate the fact that you're here tonight. It's a couple of questions that I had. The first times, one of the first meetings I was at, this project was on larger scale. That was scaled back, is my understanding.
Yes.
And when I was looking at this under the project description, initially, it listed 14 buildings and 148 units.
Okay.
And ultimately, 20 buildings and 120 units.
Okay.
When did it go from 14 buildings and 148 units to the current proposal?
I don't know the exact timing of that, sir. As you know, this has been ongoing for several years. I have, again, worked very closely with Doug Eldred and the Wilmer Wright team on this, but as far as dates and changes, I know there was several renditions of the layout early on, and then coming to meetings and working with the planning board, it became into the configuration it is, as you see it today. But I'd be remiss to try to guess when that was, sir.
Okay. And it says in here that it's going to be a two-phase project?
That's correct.
Which is going to be the first phase?
Okay.
Is that going to be the student housing, or is that going to be the faculty?
If you have the application, the third map in, there's a phasing part of it. It's a rendition, excuse me, rendering.
Are you on the thick book?
Either one of the thick books, because I did compare two of them, because we went through the interpretation of the heights and the stories, and we broke those apart, if you remember. There's a rendering of the site, and if you get to that, in the bottom corner, yup, I know it's kind of hard to read, but bottom right corner, it has it broken out into phases. And I know it's kind of hard to read, but Phase 1, they will be doing a total of, whatever, the number of buildings. Phase 1, there'll be seven buildings. Phase 2, you can see that there'll be three buildings for the student housing. And then Phase 1, there'll be one building for faculty, and Phase 2, two buildings for faculty, because there's a total of three faculty.
Okay.
So, and then the units are also broke down there, along with the number of beds. So, that is how the project will be phased. I do believe that they wanted to, again, be able to get some faculty, I'm sorry, be able to get some faculty in, as well as some students, to get the project underway, and then continue on.
So, help me understand this map. In Phase 1, what is the expected time to build?
I believe that once the final approval is obtained, what they would, I believe, want to do is come in and do all the site preparation work, and then start the buildings. Knowing the type of building, the type of structure, again, I'm not real well-versed in all of the timing, but I would believe that within a year, they would get that first phase done and go right into Phase 2.
Do you have any idea on this map?
Which ones would be first? If I recall, and again, I thought there was a phasing line on here, apparently not, but I don't know for sure. I almost, at one point, remember them coming in, I believe, from the campus and getting those buildings, at least one of the faculty, and some of the other ones done first, and then moving back out towards Route 32, if I'm not mistaken. But again, a number of buildings will be...
If you could clarify that for me, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. I can, I can get you a phasing map. I'm almost, yeah, almost believe, and I'm going to look in that other... I don't know if we actually put a phasing map, per se, in this packet, but I definitely can get that information to you.
This may come back to you, but Linda, we have a letter here dated February 11, 2013, from the Environmental Conservation Board, that strongly recommends that the ZVA denies granting the variances to the project until further steps are taken. Have we had any discussion with the NC, the ENCB, about whether those concerns have been addressed?
They have not, they have not approached me at all. No. No.
Well, I think we should try to reach out to them to find out what their concerns are.
I would have been happier if they had specified them to us.
Well, they do. They broke it down a little bit in here. Fail to adequately document the impacts this project may have on critical town view sheds. These unique and renowned view sheds are essential to the economy and community character of New Falls and must be protected from harmful impacts.
They did do a view shed test.
Okay. If we could reach out to the ENCB to find out if this is still their opinion?
What's the date on there?
That was February 11.
February 11, 2013.
While Ed is looking through his notes, is there any question that, do you mind if we interrupt you and see if anyone else has a question?
Not at all. I just have a couple more.
Are you ready? Go ahead. I mean, we'll wait for you. I knew you had more, but I thought that you were looking for something particular.
I had some time at about 1:00 in the morning the other night.
It's a good time to do it, Ed.
Some of the variances, you know, the questions that we, the five questions that we always ask, yes, sir?
For the separations between buildings, question C, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Okay. If you give me one sec...
Sure.
I'll find that response. This is building separation. We indicated that the requested variance is not substantial, given that the alternatives to meet the separation requirements would be detrimental to the aesthetics of the neighborhood, as well as to the adjacent environment. We have noted in here that there are several buildings associated with the city campus to the immediate north that are 40 to 50 feet apart. There is a single-family residence located approximately 250 feet, which is the closest to our, one of our buildings. And then the closest neighborhood is approximately 450 feet. These distances, you know, we then feel that with the three alternative layouts that we did provide in the application, that we do not consider them substantial. Again, looking at the, looking at the surrounding area, and given the fact that the fire department has, in fact, allowed us to construct in the manner in which we are proposing. Just a note back to the view shed. Excuse me. We did do the balloon study, if you recall.
Yeah.
Did put some photographs, ray photograph in here, and with the building height and such, so that we feel comfortable that it's not a detriment to the view shed. We did do some extensive analysis throughout the seeker process, and we provided information mitigation relative to those view sheds.
In your other application for the height variance?
Yes.
You, on the same question, you indicate that it's not substantial, given that the requested half-story building height only represents a 14% increase over the allowable building height.
Yes.
What percentage?
Ed, would you talk into the microphone, please?
No, I don't like it.
I know, I know, but I'm getting bad looks from...
I'm sorry. Don't give Linda any bad looks. She doesn't deserve it.
Okay. On the 14%.
On the 14%, what percentage is it on the setback, or on the building separation as a percentage? 60, 50, 60?
Yes, 50. 50, 60, because 37%? Yeah, well, that doesn't, if it's...
My understanding was it was supposed to be 80? 80-foot separation between buildings?
Right.
And I thought the closest was going to be 40 feet? And what I just heard you say, that the nearest building would be 30 feet?
Okay, yes, I believe, let me just go back, because I do believe that the... I have given 30 foot is the closest.
All right, so you're asking for a 50-foot variance from 80 feet?
Correct.
So, it's closer to about 65%?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to verify that.
Yes. And, again, I think we vary 50, 40, et cetera, but again, we're just going with the minimum between a couple of those buildings, so.
But going back to the question C, whether or not it's substantial, do you still believe that it's not a substantial request?
With the building separations?
Yes.
I do feel it is not. And I, again, I base that on the fact that we, our goal, again, would be a much better plan as it is proposed, given the fact that we're bringing those buildings in closer. I know, when you look at 65%, a double the building height, but I think a lot of that has to go through, and I don't want to judge the zoning code or where that came from, but I think a lot of it was based on fire safety and apparatus. And again, meeting the fire code, being able to work with the chief, and again, those hydrant placements, him having enough space to get in and around the buildings, they felt comfortable that the 30 feet, that was not a problem.
And just an off-topic question, I noticed the construction going on on campus right now, on the new dorm that they have.
Okay.
That seems to be all steel of some sort?
I, I'm sorry, sir, I did go by the campus briefly, but I'm not familiar with that project.
Okay, but is it going to be the same, it's not going to be the same, it's going to be wood?
Our buildings will be stick. Yes, on, yeah, wood. With full, full sprinkler.
Okay.
Take it, oh, yeah, absolutely.
In the packets that you provided us, if you weren't granted the variance, the variances, you gave us two alternative plans.
Yes, sir.
And again, I'm not an expert on reading maps, but if the variances weren't granted and you went to Plan B or C, would you still be able to get the same amount of beds? But, as a zoning law, as a zoning law currently reads?
Yes.
Okay. How close would you get to the buffers?
To what?
To the wetland buffers?
The wetlands, yeah.
We would be, if you look on Alternate A...
Yup.
And then Alternate D1, which is the next map, we significantly intrude into the wooded area at the back of the property, and we do get in very close to a lot of those wetland areas. And again, the New York State DEC has their 100-foot adjacent area, or buffer, as we call it. The Army Corps of Engineers does not have a buffer, if you will. However, we are respecting that with the current layout, but with the proposed layout, we would be getting within those buffer zones, if you will. Yes.
Can you tell me what the difference between Alt A and Alt D1 is?
It's just, as I recall, and I'm looking, we just, it's just a different layout. We have, we have put the faculty housing, if you see, the faculty housing are the ones closest to the campus.
Which, which map am I looking at?
Alternate A.
Okay, got that.
You can see the three buildings closest to campus up there?
Yes.
Those are the faculty, with the student buildings spread throughout.
Okay, got it.
And then on D, what, that is just a different layout, and you put the faculty buildings back into the, back into the woods.
Down low.
Got it. And...
And there's the same amount of parking in both?
Approximately around 450 and 500 in both.
Okay.
Yes. I apologize for some of the slower answers. It's been a couple of years since I put this together, so...
I completely understand.
Taking a break?
I'll take a break.
Should I take a break? Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Simon.
Yes.
I want to thank you for coming down, because I'm sure you can clear up a lot of issues around this project right now. You're before us, the zoning board, asking for variances on a project that the planning board has denied request for land use approval.
Yes, sir.
So, I just want to first ask you how you can ask for zoning variances if you have no land use approval?
I'd like to defer to Mr. Petroni on that, if you don't mind. Thank you, sir. I think I can answer that question.
Okay. Could you tell me your name?
I'm Joe Petroni. I'm counsel for the applicant, Wilmer Wright, for Park Point.
I'm Joe Petroni, I'm counsel for the applicant, Wilmer Wright, Department of.
Joe Petroni.
Yep. So, I'll defer to your counsel, if you use, but under the, under the town code, there's certainly nothing that would allow the ZBA to not make a determination on application simply because the planning board has denied a site plan. So, as we all know, there's, there's litigation, and the judge is going to decide whether that was an appropriate denial. But, the, that's certainly not an option under the town, under the town code, and that the planning board can't tell, another coordinate board, you all have your own independent jurisdiction, you shouldn't act because we, we didn't think it was appropriate to grant that application. Under seeker, I was actually going to read something right from the seeker handbook, which is the DEC's view of how agencies should conduct themselves for seeker, because there's been some discussion, I know, about the seeker findings, and I can provide the citation to your lawyer, but the bottom line is that, what DEC says about seeker is that agencies involved in the same action may have entirely different findings. This can result from the agencies differing, balancing of environmental, social, and economic factors, as well as from the fundamental differences among the agencies' underlying jurisdictions. So this agency looks at variances, the planning board looks at other things. An involved agency is not obligated to make the same finding as the lead agency or any other involved agency. So, you know, from our perspective, that's why we're here, we're working with other agencies, we're working with the DEC, we continue to move forward with those approvals as part of the groundfill process. Again, we have to resolve the issue with planning board, obviously, and we're doing that, we're moving forward with that, but from our perspective, you know, this, this board, we'd like the board to act, it's been outstanding, there's been several public hearings, and we'd ask that the board close the public hearing and act on the application. I would just add really quickly two other things, because it came earlier. And I don't know how all these were done, Burke, but the, the overall, for the, for the distances between the buildings, because they're not all thirty feet, there's, the calculation I saw was that it was somewhat less than forty percent, it was around thirty-seven percent, thirty-eight percent. If you take into account all of the distances, because they're not all squeezed, they're not all thirty feet, some are forty, some are thirty, so that's.
Right, but I.
I don't know if that number.
I would argue that we're, you're asking for the building that has the least amount of distance, that's really what we're approving.
Understood.
Not, we're not approving an average.
I, I understand that, but how, I don't know how that number's calculated, and maybe you all calculate it differently.
Right, but the, and the paperwork that was submitted said the closest was forty feet, and you stated thirty feet, so I don't know if the application was changed.
Are you looking at the application that I submitted?
Mm-hmm.
If you look, I think what you're looking at on that line, it says that it's, the first one you see is forty feet.
Mm-hmm.
If that's what I, I'm sorry, I'm going. Let me find, let me see if I can find that now. Number of stories, that's the one that we're missing.
Yeah.
Under one, let's see. Building separation variance application.
While you're looking.
Yep.
If I may read something from, you know, the material that you submitted. Ed, page two.
Yes.
The applicant requests the following relief. Proposed building heights, forty feet, required building separation, eighty feet, proposed building separation varies, thirty feet minimum.
Right, I think you might have been looking at that at forty feet, building height, and yeah.
That's, that's very possible.
No, because I, I saw the same thing when you mentioned that.
But from a percentage, it's still about sixty-something percent.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to continue with my question.
Sure.
Because there's no, there's no argument here between the zoning board and the planning board. The specifics that I'm trying to get to is that there is a denial of process at this point that's in litigation. And seeing as how that that's in litigation, when litigation is resolved, we don't know how it's going to be resolved. So, how, right now, we're in a kind of a gray zone. It's part of the litigation, majority of it, it could be some environmental, but it's environmental considering fiscal impact. And when, however it's resolved, the fiscal impact is still going to be there. And there's been a question of the number of units that were required and asked about, and since that time, there hasn't been any real clear answer to define why so many units are needed. And then after that, the university is now building a new dormitory, so maybe you don't even need one building, one whole building. I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that right now.
I don't.
And you're gonna, you're gonna have to go back with the planning board, when this is resolved, to get a final determination from them, correct?
Again, sir, all I would say is, if, on the fiscal issues, I can respond, the fiscal issues aren't before this board.
Yeah.
And so, what's before this board is a variance application. And again, just from our friends at the DEC, in terms of the findings that were made, we agreed with the great majority, not to get into a lot of the lawsuit, but it is, it's called a program. We agreed with probably ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of the findings that the planning board made, which I was going to just say to Mr. Burke, addressed the issue of view shed and the other issues I think they were raised. Those were all, all positively found to have been mitigated on the project. And all I would say, Mr. Hughes, is that in terms of the rationale for the planning board making the decision it did, we have a quarrel with that, but the bottom line is, there's no stay in effect, there's no injunction, and, you know, frankly, there's an application before the board we should act on. If, if, if every agency just stopped, the DEC wouldn't be processing the groundfill application, and it is, we're sending the results, we're working with them, we're hearing back from them. So I would just say, respectfully, you know, we, we, we'd expect the board to move forward and make a determination, because it's before and certainly been adequately, you know, more than adequately vetted.
Okay, but part of our determination is being based on findings by the planning board, as was mentioned by Ed and Mr. Simon, and my chair, chairperson, that we've had input from different consultants, which includes by the barber and Mr. Simon, you seem to think that the federal lack of regulating wetland buffers has to do here, and it doesn't, because we have our own home rule and our own New Paltz wetland. And that wetland would concur here, that wetland ordinance concurs here, and you have to be held to that. Now, I don't know if the planning board implemented that at that time.
Well, I, I would say, and the findings that it did, and.
Yeah.
What Mr. Simon, what's been outlined in the project, Sir Hughes, does, does abide the local restrictions. And it's one of the reasons we're asking for the variances, is to stay out of the wetland, that's, that's precisely why we're doing it.
Right.
If, or, or one of the reasons, not precisely why.
Well, what I'm saying is, the buffer requirements in our ordinance will keep you out of the wetlands. What's really being protected here in this cluster is the woodland area, the wooded areas. That's what's really being protected.
I, I think they're somewhat contemporaneous. I think the woodlands and the wetlands are, are, are contemporaneous. In other words, I think they're, they're next to each other. So that's, when we say we're staying out of the woodland, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Simon on this, but I, I believe they're more or less one of the same when you look at what we're doing, so.
Right, so what I'm saying is, we don't know what the outcome is going to be here, and I'm sure that you, as responsible developers, want to respect the wetland ordinance and the woodlands. You're building an institution for students to be at that are supposed to be learning values, and the values that this town has is very strong environmentally, with regards to the wetlands and with the woodlands.
And I would just say, sir, we've done that, and if you look at the findings, the only finding that's being challenged by the planning board relates to an area which has nothing to do with the environment, has nothing in my view to do with planning, site planning for their jurisdiction, and has to do with either economical fiscal impacts, that's their claim. And what I would say to you is that this board has plenty of information before it, it has findings that relate to all of these issues, which are positive findings, which find that those impacts have been mitigated. And I would, I would, I would simply observe that, to the extent that another coordinate board, you have your own jurisdiction, you make your own findings, you can adopt some of theirs, you can disregard some of theirs, you make your own. But in terms of the actual impacts here, as it relates to the variance application, I would argue that for, largely for the reasons that are set forth in the great majority of the findings made by the planning board, that we've mitigated those impacts, and we've done the responsive thing. We're staying out of the wetlands, we're staying out of the wooded areas as well, because they're.
I know.
So, again, there's, there's not a going back. If, if we're successful with the application we've been, we've made to the court, the, our expectation is that we wouldn't be going back and changing things. We would go back, we said to the board, we think that they were, respectfully, that the other board was wrong. This board has separate application for it, and like the DEC, which continues to move forward with our applications as it relates to this project, again, our expectation is that this court will as well, and there's certainly nothing in the town code or in seeker that would kind of authorize this board to stand back and wait. We're, we're going to move forward, and we hope to resolve, you know, the litigation as quickly as possible when we get a decision, but that doesn't mean that we don't move forward with the project, that's specifically what's set forth in the regulations.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because as we're moving forward, I still would like to know why so many dormitories are needed for so many students, in lieu of the fact that there's a new dormitory being built on university campus.
Well, I.
And that would help me in making my decisions.
Well, I, I know the SUNY Foundation and the president, there's plenty of information in the findings, has specifically stated that these, that there is a desperate need for these dormitories, and that specifically that there is, this SUNY New Paltz cannot compete for students because it has one of the lowest rates, and I don't remember where it ranks, for onsite housing, and that remains. I don't represent SUNY, you know, the, the foundation or SUNY New Paltz, I don't know what they're doing on campus, they may be replacing it, but it has nothing to do with this project, and there's been no change in, in these representations, again, they're in the findings, they were made to the planning board, that those haven't changed, the need for this housing has never changed, and it's, it's not going to change because they're replacing, or doing some construction on campus. I have no, no idea what that is, but I can tell you that that has no impact on this application for the need for housing.
How has the, the need for, for housing been determined? By who? Who's determining?
By, by SUNY New Paltz, and they've, and they've, again, I can, that, that information has been provided, there's been, it's by the president of the, of SUNY New Paltz, it's by the foundation, and that, that's based upon their study of their students, they've done, they did polling of their students, they did, and they also compared themselves to other colleges, and they found that in fact, they, their concern is about attracting the best students because they don't have, in their view, adequate student housing, and their view is supported by comparisons to other colleges in the state that have a much, a significantly higher amount on, on onsite housing.
But with all due respect, I don't think that's been ratified.
Well, it's been ratified to the extent that it's been provided, I haven't heard anything in opposition that questions that. That was certainly not, never questioned by the planning board until you have.
Just a follow-up to what Bob's asking.
Sure.
I tried, tried reading through the pounds of, of paper that we have. I was a transfer student, I understand the plight that the college is going through. But with the numbers, I couldn't see where the new dorms numbers were added. I know they're renovating one of the dorms on campus, and they're going to be renovating, I think, one a year.
I defer to you on that.
Well, I'm, don't defer to me, I'm, I'm asking you, or, or one of you to go back to the college, to, if anyone from the college is here who can address it, I would like to know from the number of beds, if the, if the dorm that is out of circulation right now because of renovations, is that being counted towards the number of beds?
Well, again, I'm sure they would have been here if they had been asked, but I can tell you this, that they haven't, you know, this, this project has never, has not changed, and certainly SUNY Foundation and SUNY New Paltz has, have not come back and said, we don't need the dorms anymore.
Oh, I'm sure they wouldn't.
Well, but, and I, and I'm sure if you went to the school, you know, that there's a, there's a dearth of on-campus housing compared to, again, other similar liberal arts colleges in the state, in the region, that's, that's why they're doing this, that, that rationale has never changed on a.
I just wanted to chime in something on, on that question. It's my understanding that when Mr. Alder was here, and, and prior to April, I think this question came up, and Mr. Alder's prepared a letter to the board, April tenth, two thousand and fourteen. That was in response to some questions that were raised at your January fourteenth meeting, and this is the day of April tenth. Now, this particular packet, again, I, I do some homework, not as well best as a Doug, but there is a letter in here from.
That's in your findings.
Donald, Chris, dated January fourth, two thousand and thirteen. It does go back, but it does speak to a lot of the need for the, not only the new dormitory, but also for the proposed project before this board and before the town. Based on the information that I, I reviewed, went through throughout the seeker process, there's still going to be, there's still going to be a housing shortage after this project, potentially with, with the new dormitory. I can certainly get some information from the proposed, but my understanding is this is not.
Yeah.
The two of those even together are not going to cure the housing need for SUNY New Paltz.
The two, the two of what together?
The student, the new dorm, and the proposed projects are.
Okay, but some of the concerns that we had heard was, if the new dorm came online, do you still need the same amount of beds? And you're basically saying, yes.
I believe that's the case, Mr. Christian Padgett, and I would just say, on that, and that was, thanks, that was what I was trying to think of. This was recently resubmitted to the court, so, by the foundation, so they certainly have not changed their position regarding the need for the housing.
And Mr. Olson has pointed out that in the findings statement, that was approved, of course, by the planning board, page four, about one, two, third, a third of the way down, the college reports it has the lowest number of quote, residence hall beds among the eight SUNY colleges, most like New Paltz in terms of academic programs and degrees granted. Even with the dormitory presently under construction, SUNY New Paltz states that it will only have forty-nine on-campus beds for every one hundred students, while the SUNY average is fifty-nine beds per one hundred students. So that's what, you know, that was a statement from the college. Thank you, Rich.
So, Rich, when do we get the supporting documents for that?
Well, this is.
You got that.
This is the findings statement made by the planning board, as the lead agency.
Right.
They have their files open, obviously, you don't have to agree with all of their findings, but I'm sure that they have it in their records.
Just, I, I don't, I haven't read that, though you're saying, currently, they have forty-nine beds for every hundred, and the SUNY average is fifty-nine beds for every hundred?
They're saying that with the construction, they will only have forty-nine for every one hundred.
After the construction.
And the average is fifty-nine per one hundred. That's a finding made by the planning board.
As, I mean, it's a question for the college.
Yeah, yeah.
But where, where did SUNY rank ten years ago, in percentage of beds versus everyone else? Where did they rank twenty years ago?
Why, why do you ask that?
Well, clearly, they've fallen behind.
Oh, 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 I see.
Why did they fall behind? Either they increased enrollment, or the other schools increased dormitories. I'm just curious to know.
Yeah, I, I.
What got them to the bottom?
Again, the support is the, is the documentation that was submitted by the president of the school, now he's got enrollment too, yeah, I mean, he's, I mean, he, he has enrollment figures going back to ninety-five as part of the submission.
And I think the enrollment numbers were pretty consistent over that period.
Which really hasn't been changed.
Well, I think there's been a change in graduates, and that, and that's where they're going to continue to grow their enrollments through the graduates, and they don't expect the graduate programs to have many on-campus students.
I mean, he has the chart here from ninety-five to two thousand and twelve, seventeen years, and there's not been a lot of change, so, I don't know, again, the way the letter is written, and I haven't read it in a while, about a week and a half, is, again, this is about competing, I guess, for the best students. And the idea is that students have consistently come to SUNY New Paltz and said, hey, we would like new guys, and we want to be able to live on campus, and they, and they can't accommodate that. And so I don't know if there's a change in how students feel about living on campus or not, but it's, at least from this, the documentation that we have, it's not a change in.
Well, I, I came here twenty-five years ago as a college, as a, as a transfer student, and I lived on campus. So I'm just curious, what has changed? I'm trying to understand what has changed over the last twenty-five years that had New Paltz fall to the bottom in the number of beds? And I know it's not, it's not a question for you.
It may have always, it may have always been there, it began from what Dr. Christian was saying, it's a matter of their concern about competing for the best students, and maybe that's more of a concern now, and it hasn't changed in time.
Right, Bob, I didn't mean to cut you off, do you have more?
That's okay.
Do you have more?
That's okay.
I do have one more question. Going, going back to the variance and the five questions, the last question, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, I don't really see an answer to that.
I review a lot of zoning board applications and that is, that's obviously one of the five questions for every application.
Right.
And it is definitely not an easy question.
Well, I don't see an answer.
I wrote it that way. Mr. Burke, no, in all seriousness, we chose to bring these buildings closer together than, than what the code requires. So, did we create it? Yes, we did. But the reason for that, again, is going back to trying to-
I understand the rea-, you don't have to explain the reasoning, but the answer is yes. This is a self-created request.
I think most area variances are. Joe, I don't know if you need to-
Well, I would just say that it's not a use variance, right? So, and, and the town law 267 says that for area variances, there are some things you can consider in terms of self-created hardship that's really not in here, that's really not a criteria that could be used for denial. I think, I think what the response is, hey, listen, we, we created this to the extent that we wanted to build a better project, we kind of stay out of wetlands and all of that, and woodlands, but we're also not, under state law, required to demonstrate that it's not self-created as we would if we were looking for a use variance. It's supposed to be an error.
I'm good.
Dale, I'm sorry. Nothing?
I have no questions.
Yes, but Pat?
No.
No questions?
No questions.
And Bob, you're satisfied for right now?
Right now.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. There are some things that I want to really get clear. And that is, this project could be built without variances. Is that right or wrong?
We have demonstrated on several different alternate plans that we could get those buildings separated. The building, again, we're trying to do the right thing, as Mr. Petro said, build a better project, respect some of the environmentally sensitive areas, and provide the community with something they can look back and be proud of. And create that, more of that, that village-type feeling for, for the students and the faculty in the, in the project.
If I might- Yes, please.
My major issue originally was these, in the separation of buildings, was fire safety. And, and that was definitely handled by our fire chief with a letter to the zoning board dated August 1st, 2013. So I take my major issue off the table.
Yes, and again, we were very cooperative with the chief and his staff to provide a very safe and accessible environment for the public.
I understand what you have said, and, and I'm in complete agreement with this, that the planning board deals with certain issues and the zoning board independently deals with others, which doesn't mean, of course, that we don't consider the plans, of course, that the planning board has approved. But I just want to make something, get something else clarified. If we were to approve the variances, and after the lawsuits get settled, there is some kind of compromise and the plan gets changed in some way, does our approval of the variances become moot? That's a legal question. Well, we'll ask you first.
Okay, I was, I was going to Rich because I wanted him to take, handle the harm. I think it would depend on the plan, how it changed.
And that's what you would say? Would depend?
Well, I will say that, as, as the suit is currently postured, there are certainly no, there are certainly no changes that are contemplated. So it's, the legal issue is, again, whether we think, you know, but, but in terms of, and I would go as far as saying, in terms of the site, traditional site plan considerations, I'll, I'll put it in those terms rather than in more aggressive terms, those have been considered.
Yes.
And I would argue that they were determined to be very positive, that the one issue that we're talking about is not a traditional site plan issue. So I don't expect-
When you say "we," you're not meaning the zoning board of appeals?
Yeah, yeah, I remember, no, never, the, the, you. But, again, from, from our perspective, from the board's perspective and the project's perspective, and I think objectively, if you look at the findings, if you look at the planning board's findings as they relate to site plan issues, they're all positive. They found that we mitigated issues. They found that we mitigated the facts. They, they liked the plan. They didn't like something that another board, an independent agency did. So that's, that's the issue. So again, in terms of what, how, what the impact of the lawsuit it would be on variances, my, my supposition is not, not at all. However the suit is decided, it's not going to be, because the planning board's findings were not, the planning board's findings that we are challenging are not related to site plan issues, I don't expect that they have any impact on variances, on whatever determinations are made at that application.
Would you like to add something to that or would you like to-
No, I, I would agree. You were simply being asked to deal with three specific area variances.
Yes, yes.
And you have findings here that you can accept or you can, you know, modify as you choose. But again, it's just the three area variances. And since they're only challenging that one finding of the planning board, should they be successful, the plan comes back as the plan is. Unless they modify that plan, the variances are then in place.
I'd like to go back to A of the area variance. A says whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of an area variance. Okay? And in the findings statement, it says, "Whereas the planning board findings statements considered that alternative and found it would not adequately mitigate the unidentified, the identified impacts of the project on community services over the 25-year term of the pilot, that those impacts are cumulative over that term, and therefore those fiscal impacts would result in significant adverse environmental impact on community character and population."
Again, I think it does speak for itself. It talks about fiscal impacts and it relates those fiscal impacts to community character and population. If you go through that findings statement, it's huge.
Right.
They make specific findings related to site plan issues. Again, our position is that's not a site plan issue, sir.
Right. But what I'm saying to you-
Their determination about pilot is not a site-
What I'm saying to you, for us, it says, "Whether or not an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of an area variance." If we didn't create any area variance, there would be no project in line, in line with the planning board. You're asking us to give you an area variance which the fiscal impact would impede on the neighborhood and on the residents of New Paltz and on the residents of New Paltz, and that's going to be to the detriment. So if, if you were not having all of the buildings and not having the number that you were requesting, we wouldn't have that undesirable-
That's not, this happened for the force.
But that, and that has nothing to do with the planning board's findings. We're asking you for our findings.
Yeah, but your, what I would say, sir, is your findings don't have anything to do with the fiscal and economic impact related to a pilot. Again, that's the, 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 the DEC has spoken on this. You, you are an independent board, you know, that makes its independent findings based upon your jurisdiction. And your jurisdiction relates to these variances and doesn't relate to, respectfully, fiscal impacts. That's a fiscal impact issue. And they said based upon fiscal impacts, we, we made a finding.
Right.
If you look at the rest of the findings, and we could sit here all night and read them, 98 or 99.9% of the findings are positive as they relate to the physical impacts of the project and the environmental impacts of the project. They found that because the fiscal impacts are related to a determination made by another agency with independent jurisdiction which has its own determination to make, they disagree with it. And on that basis, they denied site plan approval, not based upon the site plan that was before that board, it was based upon fiscal considerations. And I would argue, I would submit-
Right.
That that, those issues are not before this board.
Okay. I was just, this is how I would have to consider it, though. It says that fiscal impacts would result in significant adverse environmental impact on community character and population.
You have to remember, that's what's being challenged in the court.
Yeah.
If they're correct and that is overturned, that doesn't have any effect on the five feet that you're looking for on the height variance or the setback variance or the half-story. The environmental impacts there, I would say, are dealing more with the view shed issue, the character of the neighborhood, the, the fact that it's right next to the, the SUNY campus. If they are successful, and that's up to a court whenever they get around to it, if the court says, yes, that is actually an environmental impact, well, whether you grant the variance here tonight or not, it's not going, nothing's going to happen because the planning board then has said, yes, I'm correct, and we do not grant site plan approval.
Ultimately, you're going to use, we have to resolve that, right? Even the court has to resolve it or we do. So I'm not saying before you, saying, well, we're going to, you know, we're going to be moving forward. We have to deal with it, and I think, I'm the first one to say that. And that's what DEC says. DEC just says that you can't defer because the lead agency, at the end of the day, the lead agency has its own jurisdiction, in this case, it's the planning board, and it's supposed to make findings based upon its jurisdiction. It doesn't get to make findings for other boards because it's a secret lead agency. And you can consider its findings and you can make your own determination. I would submit that this board's jurisdiction is limited to determining whether the area variances for which application has been made are appropriate under the, under the law of the state, which is under 267, and not make determination regarding fiscal impacts. Those are not before the board.
Okay, then that's all I have for now.
Okay. I just want to make a note. The board members have any other comment at this time?
I do. And, and this is perhaps a question to our attorney. If we were to move to grant these variances and the court case was not successful for the applicant, what would be the status of those variances which run with the property?
They run with the property, but they can't build the project.
They can't.
No.
But the variances would still apply to the property.
Variances, and I believe your statute says if not exercised within one year of the granting of the variance, that the variances lapse.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And of course, after we hear from the public, if you folks have any other comments, we can, I'll give them that too. But I think at this point, you folks have been very, very patient. And if somebody would give me the sign-up sheet, assuming that everyone has signed up who intends to, oh, this is the sign-up sheeper for Wilmarite. Okay. When I call your name, please go up to the podium and speak into the microphone so that we can hear you. Paul, Paul Brown, please. And identify yourself again.
I'm Paul Brown, I'm with the New Paltz. Madam Chairman, I did not sign up for Kitty Brown, who sent an email this afternoon. Kitty Brown is not a relative, but the former councilman sent a letter to the secretary asking the secretary to provide you or read into the record a comment. So I just wanted to let you know that. I do have a copy of that letter, but I don't want to talk about that. I just wanted to-
But, but I may ask you eventually, since I, our secretary is out, we did not get that, so, you know, I may ask you.
This is my comment.
I thought, maybe at the end of-
At the end.
Yeah, but this is Paul Brown's comment.
And I, I actually support the applicant's request that you come to a decision. I do not think that decision can be made tonight. I'd like to come to the comments that I think you'll hear in mine, but I feel you are the last great hope for our town and I, I feel Mr. Hughes is on to something. Let me re-remind you of that. I respectfully request that the members of the zoning board of appeals do act and when they can, to deny all three variances. We just got a little different goal, but I do feel it is time for you to act. All three variances requested by the applicant for reasons below. Number one, the applicant's request is based on a flawed assumption that has never been proven or substantiated by any objective data provided to the town of New Paltz zoning board of appeals or to the town of New Paltz planning board. You go through those documents, which I've been through consistently for over two years, and Wilmarite's Incorporated's representative, Doug Eldred, stated during the ZBA public hearing on January 14th, these are Doug's words, "The need for housing is well established by the college itself. They have housing for about 50% of their students. The average of other SUNY facilities is 73, so we're hearing a lot of different numbers. With the addition of this project, they would get up to 60%, which of course still puts them below the average, but they are all in the, in the ballpark, if you will." That was at the January 14th public hearing where the applicant presented, and there was one student. I am trying to find the answer to that question. I have informally approached the vice president for development, who is on the board of directors of the foundation, heads that. I have written to the president. I was told by the public relations officer that the SUNY Foundation is not subject to foil, but I foiled anyway, and I am now asking for determination. I have foiled the president, Don Christian's office, and I have asked for this data, along with the entire genesis of the project, so I could understand as a citizen where the number of 725 came from. And I can tell you that to this point, I have not been given, and I have, it's not, in these, you can hear attestations by Don Christian and others, and passionate pleas that we need them. But let me ask you this. Have the members of the zoning board of appeals confirmed the accuracy of the percentages claimed by Mr. Eldred? Has each of you reviewed the actual enrollment figures for each of the SUNY facilities and the associated documented number of student bedrooms at each facility? And is that verified data? Who did the study? Does each of you or any of you know what SUNY facilities, all of them, Mr. Eldred or the SUNY New Paltz Foundation or the president and senior administrators in the college are referring to? Have you confirmed that the SUNY facilities they presumably used in their comparison are comparable to our own SUNY New Paltz campus? I'm here 46 years. If I hear "New Paltz is unique" one more time, I will just listen and smile. Have you been presented with information or data that would convince you that other villages or towns or cities occupied by these other SUNY facilities are comparable to our town? And I'm particularly interested in its census of rental space. Some of these, like Gulf to Plattsburgh and so forth, is a very cosmopolitan area and becoming more so. And all the data I have seen shows us that we have adequate rentals and this project would wreak economic havoc on our local culture and our, on our economy. If you carefully review census data, rental housing data, vacancy rates in those communities to learn if Wilmarite's claims are anywhere near accurate. Without that having been done, I, I think it would be good to have more facts. I submit that if the applicant's need for the project has not been justified, then there is absolutely no justification for the zoning board of appeals to grant any variances whatsoever. It is not need, it is grievance. The landmark New York State court case, Otto versus Steinheiler, provides clear, this is my number two note, provides clear guidance to zoning boards of appeal in New York State, stating in part that the use to be authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character. I understand the distinction, there's use variances, there are area variances, but there's a spirit of the law, and if ever a project has come before the town of New Paltz zoning board of appeals requesting a variance that would alter the essential character of our town, this is it. Your colleagues on the town planning board have denied approval of this project after years of due diligence. The New Paltz Central School District has stated that this project would wreak havoc on the finances and the quality of educational offerings in our town. The Ulster County Comptroller and the Ulster County Association of Town Supervisors take a stand against this project as it is now constituted. And by the way, you don't have to grant a variance to have them obey the wetlands law. They can shrink the size of the project to what the land capacity will do under our wetlands law. There is no need, there is grievance. There is no compunction for the ZBA to grant a variance. I have heard that some on the board are nervous about the prospect of a lawsuit. Well, I am here to tell you that your oath of office did not state that your job was to protect the town from lawsuits. Your job is to uphold our zoning laws and only grant variances for good ethical and moral reasons. I've always seen the ZBA as the heart of this community. No heartbreak here, no hardship. No heartbreak here, no hardship. Most Z B As in New York State are sued for granting illegal variances that are ultimately unsupportable to the boards, not for upholding their local zoning codes and protecting their community in accordance with home rule law. Number three, one of the most likely detrimental impacts of this proposed project is the likelihood that developer will not be able to prevent non-students and families from living in the complex. It is, in the determination of our building inspector, a rental apartment complex. Despite assertions that only students would inhabit the majority of the rental buildings, certain federal and state laws prevent discrimination in rental housing. And this development is, according to the applicant, rental housing in every sense of the word. They want it to be rental housing for our zoning code, they want it to be dormitories for the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency. Quite a bit of leisure domain. My wife says it in French much better. The applicant will simply not be able to prevent families and individuals who have the ability to pay from demanding the right to rent either a single room or an apartment. These are apartments. The town building inspector has classified the for-profit development project as rental apartments, which is the only reason you are being asked to grant variances for this project. Why in the world would any zoning board of appeals grant variances for a private development which is highly likely, if not inevitably, going to result in several unintended negative consequences for the town of New Falls? You can't control them, and the applicant certainly cannot control them, especially if they flip the project as they have done in other areas. This is detrimental to the New Falls Central School District and to our county. Your determination that these enabling variances, which is what they are, are not justified may, at the end of the day, be the very action that ultimately protects our local culture, our economy, and taxpayers, and these wetlands. You heard that the approval goes with the land, not with this project. It is a slippery slope that you are embarking. I urge each of you to allow the town of New Falls zoning codes to stand strong by not granting these variances. Please ensure full compliance with all New Falls zoning codes at Park Point. I know the work you do, I thank you for your efforts, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Ira Margolis.
I don't have the secretary.
Now, Gail, will you hang on to this?
Need a break, Trig?
The same, excuse me, I will, hang on one second. Well, this is the same thing, five copies, is that right?
One is signed, Linda, for you, and then the others are for the board members in your turn.
Okay. The signed one, keep for the files, okay? I'll just take one of these. Did you, you didn't have one?
I have two, two pages.
Oh, oh, we'll, we'll distribute this later on. Take it back, put them all together, give it all to Gail, she'll just hold on to this stuff. We can't deal with it now. Ira, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I'm glad we have a taping tonight, I gotta tell you, because a couple of comments were made tonight that if you didn't have a taping, I don't think it would ever be gotten out.
You're not coming across so much.
First off, the college keeps referring to this as on-site housing. It is anything but. It is an off-site rental property for profit that will benefit a private corporation who's looking not to pay taxes, and the college who will get their share of whatever rent this company makes. That's, you know, again, that's college speak. It's not on-site, it's an off-site housing project or apartment complex, student apartment. The second thing I thought was interesting, and Mr. Simon said, there is an economic benefit to the college for your granting this, this variance. It's a little cheaper to maintain the property. To me, that's an economic benefit to them. They, they may not consider it, or maybe it was just a slip. The other thing that I, that I noticed was that the gentleman said that the reason that they don't, they, they, they want this variance to cut down is so that they don't impede on the wetlands. We, we have a law that says you can't impede on the wetlands. So, you know, you're not doing us any favor, you know, the, the, I would think that the Z B A would treat the college, this is, or this private for-profit corporation that's gonna make millions, hundreds of millions of dollars, the same way they would treat any other builder who wanted to build on the wetlands. The answer is, no, you can't. I don't care what state law says, it was sort of adequately pointed out, and the Wilmerite return is always referred to state law. We have home rule here, and the reason we use home rule is so that we can protect our community from outside interlocers who want to harm it, which is what I personally believe Wilmerite is. I don't think they care, and I don't think the college cares about the community at all. That's my personal opinion. Then, I also noticed, in going through some of the statements that were made, well, every other college, SUNY college, had sixty percent, ninety percent, you know, dormitories. Well, my question is, are they dormitories paid for by the college, or are they housing projects for profit paid by the taxpayers? There's a big difference when you talk about, well, we have ninety percent dormitories. Well, fine, I don't care if you have four hundred percent dormitories you pay for. Once you put them out into the community and cause a problem in financing and hardship to the community, I don't care if you have two percent, it's wrong. There is student housing. In spite of the fact that the village trustees are trying to get rid of student housing in the village, there is student housing. And we have quite a number of business people who are earning their livings on student rentals. Is there one or two, I, I don't know, I don't follow that. It, it's like you can't say there is no student housing. If you look at the number, you go through the assessment rule of classifications, they're not classified, they're, they're misclassified, they're classed as individual homeowners. What we all know, anybody who's done any research, this is all student housing. When you look at the ads, it says student housing. So to say there is no student housing, and they need this extra whatever, is pure college propaganda, in my opinion. And, and, and the other thing I wanted to say is, I find it interesting that the college spoke to the fire department, but as they have in the past, refused to speak to the police department. As you may or may not be aware, they refused to speak to the police department when they first started this project. Their statement was, we don't have to talk to them, we talk to the planning board only. Well, the government will be involved after that. They sent the chief an email, asked him a question that was so narrow that his, that his answer answered that one specific item, which was totally misrepresenting what they were doing, but the chief didn't, he insisted you candid that, okay? And he has come full circle to the twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars it's gonna cost the town taxpayers to protect the village which doesn't have a police department, and they don't pay. So, this is a whole round robin, and, and I point out, in terms of my final statement, that it's my opinion that the reason they want you, the zoning board opinion, to agree to them is because they're gonna use it sometime in the future, regardless of what they say. Their own statement that I read is, oh, one way or another, we're gonna get eight projects built. So what they're doing is, they're setting up the town the same way to, to get around what, what residents and what the people want, the same way that they went to the mayor to try to get around the fact that the town was trying to look out for its residents, because they're the ones that have to pay the fee. You know, the, the village is so used to be taken advantage of, they don't think about it anymore. But we're talking a lot of money, and we're talking about a lot of people who, and you think are gonna get hurt because the village is forcing them to leave. They, they're forcing them to close, close their business so that the college can get capacity. And, and I think we have to worry more about our residents, about the townspeople who may lose their homes if the pilot goes through, because obviously the college, you know, the state doesn't care, and they're adding all this other tax-free stuff. We're not gonna have, can you, you know, the, the question I had, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask it, you know, when I asked the question about how many of those so-called dormitories that the other colleges have are on the campus, how many are both campus that'll have to be paid for by, let's say, four thousand taxpayers that we have in the town? That's a lot of money, just figuring the twenty-three-plus million dollars that the town would have to increase their police budget for, to protect the village, and, and you can see that these figures and what they wanna do is astronomical. Thank you.
Thanks, Ira.
Ken Wisnick.
I'm pleased to be here today and happy to be here.
I'm going to ask you to speak more directly into the microphone, it's a little difficult to hear you. Whoops.
How's that? That's right, that's on.
Ken, it's on, you just, you, you just have to talk into it.
Okay. All right.
Turn it back on.
What's on?
It's on.
Hello, hello.
Hello, hello.
It hasn't been working, I think. But he would've told me, wouldn't he? I mean, he's got the headset on. We have the expert coming, don't.
I'm on game show with this.
Which stores?
The prices.
Hey, David.
Little technical difficulty here.
Wait a second, wait a second.
There's a wire here.
Yes, there is.
Like, quite a few wires here. What, what's, what's your plan?
Nope, that's it, that's all I need, no.
Okay, how's that? All right. So, as I was saying.
Ken Wisnick.
Yes. I'm, I'm pleased to be here, to be able to share some thoughts on this very important community issue. I have a few things on my mind, but I wanted to first go back, I couldn't, you know, when you sit at a meeting sometimes, you just hear all these things flying by, and, and you wanna speak up and say something, and you gotta hold your thoughts, and so, I'd like to just start by making a few comments on things that I've heard here tonight before I, I say some other thoughts, so it's be a little bit maybe out of order in some ways, but nonetheless, I'd like to, to share these thoughts. First, as, as many people know, I've been a realtor in this community for the past eight years, and have had more than, let's say, average exposure with students and their families and their housing needs. I've also had many dealings with landlords, selling people homes that are used for student rentals. And the thing that occurs to me is, I hear all the comments about the need for student housing and the lack thereof, and New Falls is behind other SUNY campuses, there's some very important factors here behind those statements. First of all, I believe that SUNY New Falls is the only SUNY campus that is walking distance around the village. On other campuses, if you don't live on the campus, you gotta take public transportation, or have your own car, or have some other special arrangements, and it is a hardship for students, and really could detract students from attending those campuses, and they need to provide more student housing. Here, if you're living on Platicille Avenue or Lookout, or anywhere on the SUNY side of Main Street, it's, in many instances, closer to your classes than the Park Point development will be. The issue isn't that there's a shortage of housing, I mean, if there's a shortage of housing, you just couldn't live here, SUNY wouldn't be able to fill all its slots for students. They'd be rightfully saying, hey, we can accommodate more students, but there's no place for them to live, and so we gotta do something about it. They're not saying that. What I'm hearing behind the scenes is that some of the families that are a little bit more well-heeled want higher-quality housing for their students than is currently available in New Falls or in the dormitories. And there is a shortage of higher-quality apartments that would satisfy that need. And off the record, I've had people from SUNY tell me that they need these luxury apartments, which is what they are, they're not basic dormitory apartments, they're just dormitories that haven't been built off-campus, call them for what they are, they're luxury units. That SUNY says they need luxury units so they can attract a more well-to-do student from a more well-to-do family, 'cause otherwise, they may choose to go to a different university that gives them a higher quality of housing to live in, and that's part of their decisions to which school they go. So SUNY, if you believe the rhetoric that's being thrown our way, SUNY is saying that they are concerned about the quality of students that are coming in. Well, I'm not real sure what they're striving for, but the last time I checked, SUNY New Falls is one of the highest-rated schools. And it's one of the highest-rated with the housing that we now have. And, and I don't know about students who are more concerned about housing than education, but I can tell you that having gone to, to SUNY Binghamton, and having lived in housing that I would certainly call substandard, I benefited from it. I learned a lot about life. And we don't have really substandard housing in New Falls, from what I can see, looks better than what I even saw in Binghamton, but, and students are being accommodated, so that question really has to be asked, what it's all about. Could it be that the foundation wants students coming from, from higher-income families so that there'd be more donations in the, in the future to the foundation? I don't know, maybe. But other things that have been, you know, said here, is a question I'd like the answer to, I don't know the answer to it, it's been said, this board is not supposed to withhold acting on this application before you because there's litigation involved, it stands free, and you can move ahead on your own. But can this board choose legally to not act on the application because there's a lawsuit pending? I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's one that should be asked, I'm surprised hasn't been asked, that's just the flip side of the same question, and it may be something you want to consider rather than jumping into it at this point, if the answer's affirmative. And the, the zoning board is not obligated to, I'm, I'm sorry, the applicant has said that they can push all the housing units together, it'll obviously save them a lot of construction costs, those costs don't necessarily, cost savings don't necessarily fall to, to SUNY, from what I understand, it's more profit for the developer, and of course, the developer would wanna do it. Just because someone can do something doesn't mean they should do something. In terms of the availability of housing here too, have you ever picked up a copy of the New Falls Times and not seen ads for rentals? I haven't, and, and a good number of them. They're here, and they're here year-round. Not all of them equal to others, the most desirable ones go quickly, but rentals are here. Now, having said that, that's the response to, to the, some of the comments I've had here, I'd like to say something else and change tact entirely. I'm not sure many folks in the community realize that I had served as a director of planning and zoning for a New Jersey county, well, planning and economic development for New Jersey County for many years, and was a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I also was a co-adjudant professor for Rutgers University solely for the purpose of training pl-. their role and their obligation. Within that framework, I understand that New York is a little different than New Jersey, but some things stay the same. The things that stay the same are, when you sit on a zoning board, it's a tough thing to do. You have these decisions that are put before you to make with often people on both sides of the issue, and it's not always crystal clear from your guidelines what the right thing to do is. Sometimes it's clearer than other times. When I had my classes and people were asking me questions and trying to give certain scenarios, what, two general things that I would say, and I'd like to share it here tonight. One is on the subject of the self-created hardship or the hardship situation. If somebody gets a building lot, inherits a building lot, and I want to put a home on it, and you, and it's, you have an acre minimum and it's shy of an acre, and the house, you know, makes sense to go in that location, you know, it's a hardship variance. If someone takes, I don't mean to really pick on someone, but I, a situation, well, maybe I should, but if someone wanted to take that parcel near the Water Street Market that's been on and off for sale, that's a parking lot, and put up a five-story hotel there, you know, that might be, and ask for variance to do that, well, that might be something you call self-imposed. You're looking to make money at the expense of the community. Now, when someone is proposing a project, and that project isn't unique where it has to be on a particular piece of land one way, the piece of land that was chosen for purchase, it could have been potentially a different shape, there's more land that's available there, it wasn't restricted where this was the only parcel and we have to fit things in. That parcel was selected for subdivision and purchase for this project. And then you have this project come along and they want to sort of put a size-ten-foot in a size-eight shoe in a way they're proposing, justifying it for less cost in construction, putting everything together. This zoning board, and any zoning board, is not obligated to find the correct way to put the size-ten-foot in the size-eight shoe. That's not your responsibility, in my opinion. You sit in a semi-judicial role. You're sitting there much like a judge hearing evidence and making a determination. And in that role, what is being weighed is the best interests for the community versus what is proposed before you. Now, in some instances, zoning boards have something that they call a proposed offering. And normally, this has nothing to do with pilots or, you know, anything else. An applicant comes to a community and says, gee, we want to do this project, and this project doesn't fit with your zoning laws. And we know it doesn't fit, but if you approve this project, we will do something else for your community, a proffer, a proposed offering. And in exchange for that, the best interests of the community is weighed by the zoning board to see if what that developer is offering mitigates what the community is giving by giving that particular approval. In this instance, this project is not saying, we're proposing giving this community something extra if you approve the project. In fact, they're saying, we're going to take away thirty million dollars in tax dollars from this community if this project moves forward, and we want you to do all these special variances for us as well. And somehow, that doesn't sit right for me, and I think a strict reading of your standards clearly addresses what the right thing to do in this situation is, and I don't think it's to grant the variances. The argument that the project would go into the wetlands and the woodlands if you have to choose some other alternative. Let me respectfully suggest that if it has to go to another alternative, there's nothing that says you have to allow seven-hundred-and-thirty-two units. Cut the number of units to fit on the property that is acceptable. Don't allow it to go forward and hurt our wetlands in some way, but there's a reason why there's separation between buildings that's required, and it's not just what's, you know, being assumed here only for fire protection.
I'm going to ask that you wrap this up, please.
I will. This is my last point, and I'll wrap it up. The separation between buildings helps to give the community feel. When you see projects being built, housing projects, a lot of them will have separation between clusters of buildings or two. The view shed that's been talked about related to it, you ride down Route 32, I know about everybody else, but I would suspect other people feel as I do, that it's very stimulating to ride down that road and be able to see the Catskills over the ridge. In separating the buildings, there'd still be the opportunity to get little glimpses of it and reserve what's there. That's an important factor that goes beyond fire protection, it's not just fire protection. And so, let me just summarize by saying that you are not obligated to give someone something in violation or varying from our planning and zoning regulations just because they ask for it and want it. It's your job, in my opinion, as a zoning board, to do what's right for the community and make a decision that weighs the community interest against what's being asked for and makes a decision accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Simon, did you want to speak again?
No, we just signed up.
You signed up and then we had you speak first, I see. Okay, Erwin Spurber then. And I would ask, oh, I'm sorry, Tim is next, my misreading. Tim Rogers, sorry, Tim.
Tim Rogers, Town of New Paltz. I just want to bring up or emphasize that we're not, I don't see your board's role to look at a group of variances, but to look at three individual variances: height, number of stories, and the clustering. And if I look at the three different variances using the five questions, I think the third one makes a great deal of sense to grant a variance. I appreciate that clustering provides for less encroachment on wetlands, and it also has less impervious surface. So the third variance, to me, feels okay. The difference is, the first and second variances, the height and the number of stories, using the five questions for those two variances, how do they shake out? It seems to me that by building higher, you have more units. Therefore, there's a financial gain for the developer. My understanding is that you cannot grant a variance where the sole outcome or a main outcome is for financial gain for a developer. It's just that simple. Each variance has to be looked at individually. That's it.
Thank you. Erwin, now.
I'm a homeowner and taxpayer in Gardner, but I pay a lot of my taxes to the New Paltz School District. And since I lived in New Paltz from 1972 to 2002 as a homeowner and taxpayer, and I continue to teach on here at SUNY New Paltz, please do not think of me as some kind of interloper from Mars. I have a very strong caring attitude toward New Paltz, and much of what happens here tends to set, in many, many ways, a precedent for town boards and zoning boards in other communities, including Gardner and the other towns in the foothills here in the region. To begin with, I think a couple of words need to be said about the idea that the proposed variances are perfectly justifiable on the grounds that there's a sprinkling system in these buildings, and the fire department has said these are good sprinklers, and so we don't need to worry about how close these buildings are. Well, the fact is, we also need to consider worst-case scenarios such as when there are certain kinds of fires or other disasters, power goes off, including power generators that are fueled with diesel or batteries. And if you think I'm exaggerating this, remember the Fukushima case, which everybody was told is inconceivable as a disaster, except when it's happening, which it did. So my point is that sprinkler systems are no absolute or universal guarantee of protection against a lot of disasters. And we're talking about protecting lives, not just property. The town, this has been mentioned before, and so I'm going to be very brief about it. Some of the other speakers mentioned it, and particularly Mr. Hughes and Mr. Burke, Mr. Burke also made some very insightful observations and raised some questions about this, namely, what's all this about, in effect, that the New Paltz Planning Board denied the Wilmerite's application for approval of the project, and yet, here we are, hearing that Wilmerite wants approval for these proposed variances. Well, one of the grave concerns I have, and here I'm resorting to my recollections when I was an undergraduate and had high hopes of becoming a lawyer and never quite got there, and that's why I'm in sociology, I guess, but the fact is that there's every reason to believe that Wilmerite would, upon getting approval for these variances, use that as further legalistic justification in its lawsuit against the Town of New Paltz, and specifically the New Paltz Planning Board. And given Wilmerite's track record in many other respects, and I'm not going to go into all of that right now, Wilmerite certainly cannot be seen as some sort of exemplary corporate citizen. It's established a clearly belligerent and adversarial posturing toward the Town of New Paltz over the pilot issue, and it would seem more than likely that any granting of the variances would be used in the service of playing off the approval that the ZBA here would give, and it would do harm to the New Paltz Planning Board's very worthy efforts to get a good attorney and to defend its actions. And by the way, the New Paltz Planning Board sets a very good example for the larger number of towns in the region so far as standing up to corporate bullies who want to tell planning boards and zoning boards what their responsibilities are. I think before Wilmerite and other developers tell planning boards what their responsibilities are, companies like Wilmerite need to look in the mirror and figure out what their own responsibilities are in terms of being responsible citizens and not asking for pilots and other tax avoidance schemes. Last but not least, the real basis for a zoning board of appeal, so far as my understanding of it goes, is that it has a responsibility that is beyond just looking at narrow and technical applications of law in some ritualistic way. It's also got an important responsibility to take a step back and exercise discretion as to what is fair, what is reasonable, what is in the public interest, what's good for the community. And I don't think it's the place of Wilmerite or any other developer to give guidance counseling to the ZBA or any other zoning board anywhere on that, in light of that kind of responsibility. And so I think you have full discretion, full authority, and the trust and confidence of the public, and certainly my own good wishes in you good people exercising your own considered judgment and not being pressured or intimidated by actual lawsuits, threatened lawsuits, or circuitous arguments from any developer. And I think, just one final thought, there is far, far too much in the way of otherwise taxable property that is now off the tax rolls and that creates an intolerable burden on ordinary homeowners and the many legitimate landlords, both large and small, who have been and continue to pay their fair share of taxes. And as Paul Brown and some others have pointed out, virtually every kind of jurisdiction, countywide and the New Paltz School District and so forth, have made explicit the kind of extraordinary expense and adverse impact that would arise if the Wilmerite project goes forward with this pilot. And I certainly would urge you to take that into account, which you have every right to do in terms of your discretionary authority and your own good judgment. Thank you.
The only other thing, we have a second public hearing, so concision would be nice. Paul, I would ask that you read Kitty's letter into the record, would you do that for us?
Thank you, yes.
I just want to see if anybody else showed up late.
She still has some names here.
I came in too late to sign up, I speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Linda, very much. As a technical point, I have the complete transcript from January 14th. Chairman, Chairperson Donovan, you asked, the distance between the buildings, the change of the distance, do you consider that substantial to Mr. Eldred? Mr. Eldred's reply, I guess I'd have to say yes. So he disagrees with his colleague. I mean, it's going from eighty feet to thirty feet, I really can't hedge one way or the other on that. So, I know things change.
Now, was that Kitty's letter?
No.
No, please just read Kitty's letter.
Dear Chairperson Donovan and members of the ZBA, thank you for providing a transcript of your meeting with Wilmerite. Can you help me understand the rationale for some of Wilmerite's assertions below? On page sixteen, Mr. Eldred asserts, this is page sixteen, I believe, of the January 14th transcript, there will be open space areas. It's been clear throughout the discussion with the planning board, this goes back to the buffer, planning board and the documentation that we have sent, that there could not be any further development or any further alteration of those areas, the protected woodlands. To what documentation does Mr. Eldred refer? This is Kitty Brown asking. When I served on the town board and requested a conservation easement, we were told there would be no conservation specifically because it would violate the SUNY New Paltz Foundation fiduciary responsibility to keep its options open for further development. I was told that as the chair of the planning board as well. If such an easement has since been drafted, please ask to see a copy before you take any action. And if there is such a document, I apologize for wasting your time. If there is no document and you grant a variance based on Mr. Eldred's claim in this transcript that there will be no further development or alteration to these environmentally sensitive areas without a certified conservation easement— sensitive areas, without a certified conservation easement, Wilmerite could in fact come back and develop these lands. I am respectfully requesting that you postpone any action on these variance requests until a conservation easement with an appropriate endowment between Wilmerite, the SUNY New Paltz Foundation, Goshawk, and any other financially interested party is submitted for approval by the town, to the, it says by the town of New Paltz, I believe she means to the town of New Paltz. Kitty Brown, and I do have copies of that.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
And last one, Bob Gabrielli. I'm sorry.
Linda, I would like to speak too. I didn't get here until 7:25, so I don't have a sign-up sheet.
Okay, more than five minutes. Three is better, Bob.
When the tax bill comes, I always pay 100% of it. I hope you'll be able to hear what I have to say. And it's a pleasure and an honor to be here at the ZBA. I always have to spell it, because I can't pronounce it. I'm a graduate of SUNY New Paltz, and I was a commuter for all my undergraduate studies, which lasted six years. It gives you an idea why I can't pronounce ZBA. But I have a few things I wanted to say, and I will abbreviate them as best I can under your mandates. This is not, this is self-generated, it's economically driven, the number of units has been self-determined, there's more land available, all these things have been said previously. Student housing, we've had representation made to your board and other boards throughout, and they're all verbal representations. I just, you know, I just retired from state service for 18 years. I was the deputy inspector general for frauds. And I'll tell you, I know a little bit about frauds, I know a little bit about representations, I know a little bit about criminality, and I know a little bit about civil representations. I've never seen any written representation about so many significant items been absolutely We've had representations about leases, about if there are students, are these going to be student-only housing? Nothing's ever been presented. I know the boards have called repeatedly, I shouldn't say that, I have asked repeatedly the planning board and other boards to ask for projections, fiscal projections, for Never had them. So I'm asking you, that before you do any of this stuff, you demand that the applicant produce to you written representations. You know, I think any lawyer will tell you that once all this is over, and all these representations have been made to you verbally, it doesn't mean a hill of beans, and no one is going to ever bother to try to enforce it. No one. We've been told this is going to be student use. Let me tell you something, this college has been very good for the town. This town has been very, very good for the college. Half that equation is lost on the college. And I know that there's probably a little voice in your head saying, "We ought to give them this to show the college that we really, really think they're great people."
Please don't anticipate any voice in my head.
I am a member of the New Paltz Property Owners Association. There are a lot of landlords in that group. I've asked, I've done my own survey. No one has ever been, none of the landlords that I know, and I know quite a few, has ever been asked any questions, they've never been surveyed concerning lease, their vacancy factors, or their demands on their housing. I think if this goes through, there, and you know what, most people in this town hope it goes through. I hope it goes through. But I hope it goes through fairly. You know, I've seen the ZBA deny quite a lot of requests, and I think that if you grant this, you have to really take a hard look if you're establishing a policy that's contradictory to previous rulings. You're going to open some floodgates. I think that what's going to happen, well, we've been talking an awful lot about economics, which is really off the point, but I do want to, I do want to address it, because it's been opened by other people. Matter of fact, they said today, I think it's been addressed already by you, Mr. Hughes, that the planning board lawsuit, if it goes through, may not have a bearing on this. Well, it does. It's going to have a significant economic bearing on this project, and it will completely change the economics, completely changes. So any representations that are contrary, I think are absolutely flagacious. The college, I said before, the college has been good to the town, the town's been good to the college. The town provides, fills a need, fills a need for the college. They want off-campus housing. People come here, Craig McKinney, years and years ago, did a survey where it was something like 80% of college students in their second year, 80% look for off-campus housing. We haven't had any of those studies done by the applicant, or at least they haven't been made available to us. Now, if this project goes through, there's going to be an oversaturation of housing stock, that's for sure. No one's studied that. No one's presented any of those figures. So what's going to happen is going to be, could be very dangerous. The college has never approached the landlords, never approached the town and said, "What are we going to do? Are we going to stage this? What can we anticipate?" You're worried, perhaps, I hope you are, about whether you can enforce any representations concerning student-only use. In the towns, if you've got great vacancy factor, you may have opened the door for a need for any tenant. You might wind up with Section 8 housing. You might do terrible damage to the community character. I hope you will bear that in mind. You know, it's not you that's granting these people any exceptions or any great thing. It's us, the community. And that's the whole community. That's the landlords, that's the people who service the landlords, the people who do all that stuff. And one last thing I got to tell you, if you look at income property, there's a whole bunch of categories of costs. The most important one, you have to pay the taxes. The next one, you have to pay the mortgage, you have to pay the fuel. And up on the top, in a higher surface, structure, superstructure, is maintenance. And that's really, it's almost optional. And if you do something, give a grant here, that will affect the economic, the fiscal outlook of our community. Landlords won't have the same amount of money. And if they don't, the first thing they're going to chintz on is going to be maintenance. And if they do, the character, the outlook, when you drive through New Paltz, those things are what's going to be first hurt. Thank you.
I'd just like to say something.
Yes, stop. Just stop.
I'd just like to say something at this point, and that is, is that we're identifying specific queries or disagreements or agreements with a specific project. We in no way are adverse to Section 8 housing as a town. That's all.
I would also like to say something, and that is that this is the zoning board of appeals, approval. We're dealing with three variances. We are not approving or disapproving of the project. That is not our role, and cannot do that. Your name, please.
My name is Tammy Friedman, town of New Paltz. I'm going to just agree with everybody's opinion and the public so far who have spoken, and I'm going to talk about something a little different, a personal situation. So I live in this community, I do volunteer work at the college, bringing speakers for the environment, and I'm also a taxpayer here. And I'm also on the community improvement team. I came before this board once, and I asked for a variance for a fence. I had a four-foot fence, and I needed a six-foot fence, because there was a very unstable person on the other side of my property, and I was trying to protect my tenants. And with all due respect, Chairwoman Donovan, you told me you're not here to fight my battles, to go to the police department. And two weeks later, I gave up on that fence. You know, it's not the biggest deal, but the man came out of his house with a shotgun, and he was looking for people. There was no one out, but he shot himself. So I just want you guys to listen to your heart in this matter, because people's lives are affected by your decisions, whether you grant things or don't grant them. The community is all affected by your decisions. And I understand you could say yes or no and make decisions based on that, but you have to look at what the community is saying, and this project seems like a disaster for this community. It's good for a few people, for sure, the ones who have the pockets in this deal. That's about it. And I really don't see any reason why all of the other boards turned this project down, why you would even contemplate a decision to approve a variance which does not have to be given for any reason. And, you know, the fence caused one person to die. It could have caused a few people to die. And, you know, that's just an example of, yes, maybe that should have been granted. That was an unstable person. I don't know if we would have saved his life, or possibly saved other lives, but those are the kind of decisions that you guys need to weigh out. Thank you.
Jeff.
I'll be brief.
Thank you.
Jeff Logan, you're very welcome, Linda. Jeff Logan, town of New Paltz. You pretty much all know me, and I want to thank all of you for staying through this, and I understand how all of you feel. I felt the same way last night at the planning board meeting, and I'm going to feel the same way tomorrow night at a village meeting, and my day starts at 6:00 in the morning, so this is what we sign up for in public service. I'm just going to be real quick. I'm not going to try to discuss with any of you about the criteria that must be met, there are five pieces. The one piece I will speak to, and Kitty Brown pointed out part of it too, and that's the open space and the amount of land that is available there. I'm just going to be very brief here. I will simply quote a couple of sections from January 14th, 2014, and this is from Doug Eldred, P.E., which is physical engineer. Sure, most of you know Doug. Some of the original plans had up to 1,400 units on it, which could be done in a dormitory type fashion. Instead, we have gone forward with a private developer. And I just want to point out, I think it's kind of interesting that Doug used the term "we," and then he caught himself in the next sentence, or and he changed it to "they." I think there's been a real commingulation of both the university and our developer here, and the driving of it, and what is making this a project for which they have made a self-created problem here. And they're asking for a quasi judicial board, which any ZBA in New York State is, to then also go on their side. So when you're getting presentations, remember, you're not only getting a presentation of the facts, you're getting a presentation of a sales pitch. That's what it is. And they're here to sell you a little bit on it, no different than any homeowner that comes before you, no different than anyone else that comes before you. They're going to make a little sales pitch on why it's going to help them out, and what's going to make them better. So it's interesting that they said they could put up to 1,400. Like you, Ed, I have read through thousands of pages. I think the only person here that could catalog on his head is probably Paul Brown, and I will admit that occasionally I have referred to him to help me find some items. It is very difficult and time-consuming, so if you ever need help, give me a call, but I know someone better. I'll give you his number later, if you don't have it. Again, quoting from Doug, "As a comparison, we did prepare what we call a conventional plan, which did meet all the zoning criteria." Period. They did a conventional plan. It met all the criteria. I don't know, I seem to have heard tonight that it's going to encroach on wetlands. No. It'll get closer to them, but it will meet the zoning regulations. This is two-story units, and as you can see from here, he had a map at the time, actually was at this meeting, so there was a map, if you remember, it was a presentation to you. As you can see from here, there are some examples. For example, this back here goes into the next woods, and everything is spread out. The buildings, they are long, and try to keep it as condensed as we can, but maintaining the 80-foot separation. By way of comparison, 2.4 acres more woods would be removed from the wooded area, and 1.4 acres of more impervious area would have to be provided to this layout. That would not require any variances. And when I say it happy and with a smile, it actually sounds like a good plan, doesn't it? Because that's what it is. It's a plan that shows that they can do it within our zoning laws. The plan they have presented to you is a self-created problem. You are in no way obligated. In New York State, a zoning board of appeals has never gotten in trouble for upholding the zoning laws. Problems come when zoning boards of appeals try to force, I will quote Ken here, if I've got the right sizes, a size 10-foot into a size 8 shoe. Sometimes it doesn't fit. It is going to change the character. That is a corridor which will change. Our community has spoken out and said, "This is a corridor we want to see developed." Is this the development that our community has spoken about, though, and that they want in this size? Most of this community has said, "We welcome the housing." But I think we would be all very foolish in sitting here, when at the very beginning of that presentation in January, they said they could put in 1,400 beds, I believe is what he meant to say, not units, or a unit being a bed. That if they can go from 50 to 60% with roughly 700 units, and they're still 10% below to 15% below the state average, I don't know, does that sound like maybe they do have plans for another 600 or 700 units? And where is this available land? Would it be this magical woods, which is able to be developed legally under our zoning? If this woods cannot be encroached upon, as we've tried to be sold tonight by a speaker, then why won't they put it into public lands? Put an easement on it and allow it to stay open? I think the 1,400 number presented to us in January had some meaning to it. And I think the word "we," which was then changed to "they," has a lot of meaning in it. And that this project can go through without any self-created problems. And that may be using one of the plans that spreads it out. So again, Linda, I thank you very much. I thank you all for your patience and the time you're putting in.
Thanks, Jeff.
And look forward to more hearings.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. At this point, I will entertain a motion that we close the public hearing. Made by Ed, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gail. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion?
If we close the public hearing...
Yes.
Then...
We have held, I want to just mention that we have held this public hearing open for... Five months now? And this is the first time in all those months that anyone from the public has appeared to speak before the board. So I feel that you have had more than enough opportunity. If we close it, we have 62 days to vote.
To reach a decision.
To make a decision.
And I think you've been given quite a bit of information, and you need to go back and take a look at it before...
I do, too.
Right. My question is, that there's been so much mix-up around this project, has all of the public had a chance to respond? So I'm not against closing the public hearing, but my question is, is can other people still submit in writing?
No.
Anything?
No, not if the public hearing is closed.
I mean, if the board wants to say, "I give everybody 10 days in which to submit something in writing," that's fine, you can do that.
So we can close it in 10 days, or two weeks, or something?
Or you can close it tonight, and so you'll receive public comment in form a little later than...
That's what I would like.
My feeling is that the public, I would go along with that, but my feeling is the public has had so much opportunity to speak before this board, and we have heard no one, you know? But, okay, maybe Ed will modify, we'll see after we hear from Pat. Perhaps Ed would like to modify his motion, then.
I believe that the reason the public is here tonight is because of the lawsuit that's been filed against the planning board. So I don't know whether the public needs additional time. They have heard that the planning board has been sued, and consequently, many of you have come tonight. Whether anybody else would come later on, I doubt.
The issue is that the ZBA is not dealing with that lawsuit. The ZBA is dealing with three variances.
That's true.
That's it.
Right, so the issue that I'm stating is that because of all of the confusion around this project, there will be publications about tonight's hearing. I just would like to give the public 10 more days to respond and write.
I have no problem amending my motion.
I have no problem amending my motion that we will accept public comment in written form through August 25th.
Today's the 13th through August... Make it... I was going to say make it August 30th, but, you know. I don't know. Whatever, whatever you like. Yeah. What date do you like?
August 31st. We'll make it through the end of the month.
That's the scene.
Because that next meeting until the second two days of...
And Gail, would you second that?
I would second that.
Okay.
In favor?
Yes. Do you have an opinion on that? As our lawyer? Okay. Then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we finally got the public hearing closed, more or less. And would you like to speak to us at this point? Or would you...
I think once the board's had the opportunity to digest the information that's been given, if you want. If you have a meeting, we can undo that.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Let's... Perhaps we can meet with... Is there a... Can we have a special meeting to talk to our lawyer?
Thank you, Albert.
Would have to be.
Thank you for having me.
Why don't you wait until you get your public comment in fully?
Yes, absolutely. It had to be after August 31st.
And then you can reach out and...
And then I'll touch base with all of you, and we'll find a date and see what Rich can do, too.
And what is our next meeting, the 9th?
Now, we have another public hearing. And I'm so sorry. Your poor thing.
You could work through that.
Thanks, Rich. Thanks a lot. Maybe I'll talk to you.
The problem is the knees lock after a couple of...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I can stand up there. So then we'll be able to get back in touch with Rich before we reconvene.
Absolutely. Before the 9th. Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to take the bathroom, right?
Okay.
Goodnight, Rich.
We know where Joe's at.
What's that?
Where is Joe?
Joe's gone.
He didn't feel that this was going to be something that he especially needed to be here for. Now, you're here for the novella? Okay. Come on up and join us, please. I just have to stand up a minute, too. We owe you big time.
Sorry about that.
And gentlemen, I'm going to ask that you leave the building, please, rather than converse up there. Erwin, would you guys go out, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
You, too.
Not likely.
That's over.
And I'm sorry, your name is?
Kim Hoover.
Kim Hoover.
Representing Albatross Venture Capital Group.
That's a terrible name, Albatross. Why would you name something in Albatross?
I think it's because they had some bad luck with this building.
Yeah.
Why don't you explain it? Bob isn't here, but he'll pick up on this, I think. What seems to me fairly straightforward.
Okay, so we're looking to get a variance for a fence and a pergola.
For the front yard setback. Right?
Yes.
How many feet was... Yeah, it was about 2 and 1/2? About a 2 and 1/2-foot variance, was it?
It was...
Required zoning for the front yard setback is 35 feet. Existing setback is 33.5. We request setback for the new pergola of 8 to 10 feet and a new sign of 2 feet 8 inches, as well as a new privacy fence by the pergola, with the fence being at an angle, dah 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 dah. So the difference between 35 and 33 and 1/2 is 1 and 1/2? Feet? Which is...
Mm-hmm.
Look at yours rather than open line chairs.
And that was so we could create the, like a bridal party, private bridal party garden.
And the fence... Is that lattices or what do you call it? Pergolas?
Yes.
But you must know...
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we... Please, please tell me where the new motel is, where their property line is.
Oh, oh, the Hampton Inn.
The Hampton Inn.
They're on the other side of the sign.
This line here.
This is Toiliger.
The hotel is over here. Down here.
Yeah. Here's their sign, and a new hotel's down there.
Okay, and your property line goes... Where is your property line?
It's Toiliger Lane.
Yeah, but where is it here? Okay, this is your property line? Okay. So you're talking about... There's still a lot of space here, isn't there?
Yeah, that's the parking lot.
Parking lot, okay.
It's too bad.
Well, that's why they need this fence.
Right, and the thruway's right here. So the idea is to sort of buffer the thruway also.
That's, I think, would be important, sort of.
Yeah. So the idea is to sort of create its own private space, but then try to buffer the noise.
You're going to buffer with plantings?
Um...
I think we need to take a vote to open this public hearing, you know?
Yes, we do.
Yeah? Okay, I make a motion that we open this public hearing.
I second that.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay, plantings. The question was plantings?
Right, so it's... This is the...
Are we still...
Yes. On the mic? I would have seen.
Public.
Oh, it's nice. I mean, I think it's...
Right, so just some background.
Here's the thruway, okay.
Right, and so the idea is to have a covered walkway. So the bridal party can be dropped off here. And this is the bridal suite. And then they could also have their own private garden. Pictures and...
But the variance is for... Over this end that's required.
No, it's over here.
Oh, it is?
In the little one. And so it's for the privacy fence. And then the pergola also is a little bit...
I see, okay.
And then on the site plan is the sign also.
That's here.
This is all through?
Yep. What are really lucky is the owners really want to put some money into it, so it's a great, like a really exciting project for us tomorrow.
It is. First time something nice is...
The buffers on the foliage that you're going to put in, whether it's shrubs or trees, who are you consulting with about that?
Liz Elkin from Bloom Fine Gardening.
From who?
Bloom Fine Gardening.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know the name.
Yeah. She does beautiful work. And so a lot of it's layered. And the ideas... The colors are going to be purple and white, because purple goes with everything, which I really didn't know. But any wedding colors will go purple. A little purple and... And different flowers that bloom.
The Russian sage, that's purple.
Yeah. And there's lilac, hydrangea.
What is it, privacy fence, maybe?
Well, I have it on there to match what's in the back. But she said, "No, it's going to be nicer than that."
But what is it?
It'll be wood.
Non-seethrough.
Right, yeah.
And it's going to be 6-foot high?
Yes.
And that's approved? 6-foot? It's not a front for the property?
We're talking about this fence here? Is that what you're looking at, Ed?
Is it going to go like this?
Well, actually, on this side is just deer fence.
It's just...
Deer fence on the thruway side. She's going to have arborvitae there, those evergreens.
They're not deer-proof, I have to tell you.
Wait, Susan?
That's the deer fence.
You have the keys? We have to...
Jeff's going to lock everything up.
Thanks.
Ends up that's the only door that we have no key to.
Now we do.
We learned that tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Now he's got it.
Okay.
But ultimately, she will be growing clematis up that side of the...
The front?
Yeah. So it'll... And I think that's one of the things she has, is that she has something that she can...
Polish clematis.
Yeah.
But Stacy reviewed this and didn't have any issues? There's not an issue with having a 6-foot-high fence?
On Toiliger?
Stacy should... Yeah. You know, it's such a funny... That Toiliger Lane is such a funny thing. You know, is it the front yard? Is it the side yard?
Yeah, when I was in the planning board, they said, "Okay, that's the front."
They did, huh?
The front, the building is this way.
So they're saying this is the front?
Yeah.
I'm just...
Yeah.
How you get a 6-foot-high fence in the front?
Well, it's building... It's B2, not residential, keep in mind.
Okay, so a B2, that's okay?
I don't know, but that's a consideration.
I don't know either. And if Stacy didn't pick it up, she usually does.
I'm sure she would have.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it. I went over everything with her. And it's a dead end. And the lane just kind of stops and it turns into their driveway.
Yeah, I don't think there would be a problem. But the point that Ed's making is if it's against the law, then you need a variance, you know, for that.
For the 6-foot fence, yeah.
Bob, you have the code book right there, don't you?
The code book?
Can I see it for a second?
This shows fencing. This shows fencing. This would be the 6-foot fence here?
No, that's actually the pergola for the front garden. This is the area over.
This is the...
No, I didn't show the fence. This is actually the enclosure for some of the mechanicals in the back. So this is just the pergola. I didn't show the fence.
Okay.
That was true. But I have a color one, if that's easier.
That's, yeah.
This is the same thing, except it looks black.
Here's the fence.
We're over here, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if a variance is needed, it seems to me we could grant that variance.
I don't see that it would be an issue. But, you know, it has to be applied for. It has to go to Stacy. It has to, you know, the damn procedure has to be followed.
Why is that considered front? I don't understand why it's considered front yard.
Because it's like my house. You know, the narrow wing of my house is considered the front of it because that's what's at right angles.
It goes onto the road. Toiliger Road is the road.
People entering the property, too. And they use that, so it would be going to the front.
No, and my...
No.
I mean, my house...
Why? The front is here. You enter the road from...
This is the entrance, but the road is here.
The road is there.
Right. But they have to enter from the park... From the road into the parking lot. I don't know why. That would have to be considered front yard.
It has to do with the road.
With where the road is.
Where the road is.
All right. If then, it is the front yard, then she will need a variance of 6-foot.
I would think so.
For the 6-foot fence.
6-foot. But again, if it's... I'm trying to find...
What's the... What's the limit?
3-foot.
No.
It's 4-foot for residential.
4-foot wouldn't do it.
That's what Ed is looking up, what it is for B2.
Whether it's...
B2, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's call Joe.
Call Stacy?
Let's not say we did. What do you got?
You got Stacy's number?
I do. It's 9:40.
She's up. She's watching some show.
Here's my phone.
I'll call it.
Yeah.
I think we could move on it without Consulting Stacy now, and that we would be in favor of granting a variance on it.
But we don't know whether we need it. That's the only...
But if we don't, we would be in favor of approving it.
Where the hell is Paul?
Over on the left.
That one?
Yep.
Black, but I think others still have this.
You should see what I have. Little flip phone.
Hi, Stacy. It's Ed. How are you? We figured you were bored and were missing us. We're looking at Novella's site plan, We're looking at Novella's site plan, the fence that they're looking to put on the north side of the property, in the B2. They're saying that's the front yard. There's, in the B2 zone, can you have a six-foot-high fence in the front yard? I'm looking at the code book, I can't find it.
That's the way to look, she'll tell you about it.
All right, I was in 1:40.
So not only is this the front of the building...
Oh, yeah.
On the back of the building is the throughway. It's truly the side, right?
No, on the side of the building is the throughway.
Truly the side, and the back is over there.
The back is down here.
The bridal, the court.
They're putting a fence in the garden, right, they're gonna have the bridal parties.
If you went ahead with this project, how long do you figure it would take you? Say you got that distance approval granted, how long would it take you to build the pergola, to da-da-da-da? And would the fence be the last thing that went up? It still would need some planting.
Um, I think that their plan would be to do that garden in the spring.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, they have to do it in phases, they kind of do it as they have parties.
Okay. So I mean, I just didn't want to hold them up, you know, if you were planning on using this in the fall when their wedding's there, and we said, "Oh, well, you can't put the fence there," you know.
The September wedding.
I think, but they're not allowed to do anything until we get everything done. So, and they, they need to be able to plant absolutely no later than October, and that's only if it's a warm October.
Yeah.
So they're starting to panic a little bit at this point. Because I'm tempted to just, I forget the fence, if it comes to that, but I'd rather have the fence.
Oh, I think you need the...
Climatus.
What you can do with a four-foot fence?
Can you, is four feet allowed?
She's looking at it.
Yeah, I have it, I have it on like a five-foot fence, you gotta have at least five. But I do think for noise inside the garden, you kind of have that.
Oh.
To climb.
Yeah.
If you built a one-foot burn.
I'm about stakes, I'm about stakes and string. Inside the floor, inside the floor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Inside, yeah, I know, noises.
Yeah, and there's nothing else down there.
No, no, and there'd been such, you know, kind of crappy things down there in that building.
Yeah. We're anxious to see something nice happen, actually.
Well, they did the inside, did you go see the inside?
No, no. Is it nice?
Is it?
We'll have to go.
Yes, yes, good.
And it's your desire that I work with the inside.
Now, do they have any weddings lined up of any, any...
Oh, yeah, all summer, and...
So they're in operation?
They've been doing them as-is.
Yeah, yep, yeah, and they said people drive up and they're all disappointed when they see the outside, and they're all pissed. They want that, you know, emotion.
Somebody there every day?
Well, sure.
C1, 1:41.
All sorts of groups have parties there.
I mean, is somebody there every day if you want to go see?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if she's there all day on call, it depends on what kind of events are happening.
Do you have a card?
Yeah.
For her?
For her, for the organization.
You mean to get into the building if you wanted to see it?
Yeah, make sure somebody's there.
Okay, so she's good.
If you just do a search online for Novella's, and you call, it'll come right out.
Because we do, we have a number here, too.
That's my number.
255-2122?
Yeah. 255-2122.
Right, yeah, it's only six feet.
So that's the number.
Yeah, yeah, you call that.
It's a go? Terrific, terrific, we should've known that she would've...
What'd she say?
Under code, business and industrial properties, in any business district or industrial district there, shall be no restrictions on fences or walls, except on a residential district boundary line.
Isn't that interesting?
Where such fences or walls shall be limited to eight feet in height.
Six foot is fine, yeah.
That's good.
Okay.
Should've known that Stacy would be on top of that. So the only thing then is the proximity variance.
Of...
Get rid of this, yeah.
Which is which, are we taking heads?
Sheet here.
Okay.
There. Okay.
This is what we're, this is what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
What you calling up?
It is your private spot.
Okay.
So it's about two private spots, that is, the fence and the pergola, and then the sign.
Oh, we were pointing over there.
No, I'm sorry, it's really over here. I was talking about this. Okay.
Yeah, the sign is there, if anybody wants to see it, behind the building, and they want, they'll probably move it, I told them to move it.
But it's up?
Yeah, it's up, it's a sign. But let's just, well, it was in the stone.
Well, it's the same sign as, that's...
South Putt, right here?
On South Putt, corners, isn't it?
Yeah, it comes out a little bit.
So you guys don't have any sign there?
No.
There is a sign on South Putt.
Oh, yeah.
It's on a crossbar.
But it's not like...
Yeah.
Is that sign going to go on, on South Putt, or is it just gonna be here?
Um, here.
So how, how are people from South Putt and 299 going to know how to get to you?
Um, I guess there's a little sign already, but I'm not supposed to talk around that.
Okay.
It's been there for a while, I guess.
It's been there a long time.
Yes.
It's not on your property, and it's not your variance.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Funny, I never noticed it.
But I told them to move this sign to where you drive in, so that it looks...
Yeah, yeah, I would think so too, and their reaction was...
Maybe, because there's two partners, and they always argue about stuff.
That's good. Kind of like a board.
And that's your property there, all behind the sign too, that's the parking area, isn't it? Well, you want the sign?
Yes.
Right?
A variance on the sign is for the size, and it was...
The height, or the square footage.
Right, and it wasn't much greater.
No, I think, well, they told, they told me the sign from it already exists, I think we're just gonna variance for the location of the sign.
Because it's too close to a property line, or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Setback for new pergola of eight feet ten inches, and a new sign of two feet eight inches, as well as a new privacy fence, so it's, it's a setback, they're just asking for setback variances.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, what if you moved this back to two feet eight inches, it's just not visual from the road?
That way you can see it.
So how much, how much of a distance is the variance, the sign?
Two feet eight inches.
A two-feet-eight-inch variance?
No.
Well, that's what is off the property line.
Oh.
That's what I'm...
Oh, yeah, 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 right, it is.
And then what?
A few inches from the property.
And then what, um, Joe?
Mariallo?
Yeah, what he said was, is if you look at it visually, the curb is out past the property line, so visually, the sign will be farther off the road.
Right, from the curb.
Right.
So what is the distance? I know you say here a few inches, but I think it's more like three feet?
Yeah.
From the curb?
Yeah.
Oh, from the curb, it's probably five and a half feet, if this is to scale. Because...
Yeah, it's about almost eight feet.
From the curb.
Eight feet from the curb.
Okay, so from the property line to the curb, whose property is that? Is that the town's?
From the property line to the...
Whose sidewalk is that?
Hmm, it's a town road.
Is there a sidewalk?
Is there a sidewalk there?
No, there's no sidewalk.
It's a curb around, like a...
Just a curb?
Yeah, it's a curb that's around an area, a mound of soil.
Oh, okay.
There's just molten rock there.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you look at it, Bob... Somewhere?
Yeah. I had it towards the sign.
Okay. No, not the sign, it's just the, the overall property. Okay. So here. Okay. So the overall property, this is a curbed area.
Bob, will you move your hand? Thank you.
So, B2 has a larger plan, if it's easier to see of that, of the sign. But it doesn't give you the whole perspective on the property, which is what I'm trying to point out.
Right.
So here's Turwilleger.
Yeah.
You enter the parking lot here, you can also enter the parking lot here.
Okay.
There's this bump-out curb area that just jots out a little into Turwilleger, that kind of frames the entryways into two entrances into the parking lot.
It actually could be an in-and-out.
Could be.
Could be.
So in that is, yeah, is, you know, mulch, dirt, and a sign.
Okay.
So the curb already exists beyond the property line, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you gonna plant around the sign, or is it just going to remain just the sign?
No, they're just gonna leave as the sign, and in that way, you're drawn to the, the front of the building, the garden.
I would think they would probably put...
Basically, you're saying this is a little island, right?
Probably put some planting.
It's two-foot-eight inches from the property line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kim, the prop, the setback for the sign legally should be how far from the property line?
Well, I couldn't hear your question.
The setback for the sign.
Yeah.
The sign setback from the property line is required to be how far?
Oh, oh, you mean by code?
By code.
I don't know. Well, if, if, if they're asking for a two-foot-eight-inch variance...
No, the sign is two-foot-eight inches from the property line, but the variance is the difference of what it should be from the property line.
Yeah, yeah.
So what should it be from the property line?
I thought that was, I thought the two-foot-eight inches was the variance.
And then could we use the curb for that?
Yeah.
Sorry.
We're kind of past the formality of that.
I remember Stacy telling me I was wrong.
You remember?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have a note from Stacy on this, do we?
Oh, yeah, it's a monument sign, that's it. I see.
Thank you, Ed.
Waiting on me again?
Yeah.
Yep.
You say you can deal with it, B2.
It's simple, you would press the sign and say...
It's not. I mean, you don't have the requirements of the zoning plans, I'm not putting on, it's just...
So there again, Stacy didn't comment on that issue?
Do you have a, a letter from Stacy?
No. No.
No.
So...
Signs can never really exist, see signs specification on the sheet.
It's under your papers.
Yeah, I have that, I have that in here too. But what I want is...
What, what are you looking for, Bob?
The sign permit that already exists.
Oh.
That's this.
Which it says on the plan.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the sign guy told me.
That's this, right?
That's what they, yeah, that's what they got the sign for, so they put the sign in where they put it.
And they put it where?
Um, it's sort of faces the throughway.
Right, okay.
So it's a little bit behind the building?
Yeah. Got it.
Which doesn't do a bit of good back there.
No, they just agree with me about, oh, some of them are trying to get people who are driving by to come.
On the throughway?
No.
Yeah, it's too late already.
They're going seventy miles an hour.
It's not driving by, it's just directions, if that's the place you're looking for.
Yeah.
I'm looking for Novella's, you see the sign?
Yes, how would they get there?
And then you're, then it's too late.
You pass the sign.
There's a whole separate section of signage. She's asking for...
Who's asking for it?
This is it, that's not a light industrial zone, right?
No, it's a B2.
So it's not high, is it a highway business zone?
Yes.
Yeah.
I haven't attempted to check any of those stuff.
Pre-standing signs only for establishments that are set back from the property line by twenty-five feet or more, that's not the area.
But that makes...
The establishment is set back.
Yeah, the establishment is set back.
Yeah.
Lynn, is it the sign law you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which part are you talking about? I was actually unfortunately part of one-on-one writing that law. The sign must be set back ten feet or more from the property line.
Okay, that's it. So you're asking for a seven-point-five-foot variance.
Seven and a half foot, so seventy-five percent variance.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Well, if, if they did that, you wouldn't be able to see the sign.
She wouldn't, the sign would be in the parking lot.
Right, right.
Right, it would be in the parking lot.
I mean, given the circumstances, and that's all way off the road and the back of everything by the establishment, and in the parking lot to direct patrons that park their cars, how to get there, I think it's reasonable.
And that it's about eight feet from the existing curb that already sticks out beyond the property line.
Right, we have footage from the curb, which is a town curb.
Then Stacy didn't comment on that, maybe I thought she did.
No.
I thought I was seeing that, I thought you...
I know, I know.
I thought I was reading that in, I thought I saw her comments on the sign. Is that an existing sign?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's somewhere else, it's in front.
It's over by the throughway.
Over by the throughway.
I, I think, you know, it's such, the whole building is being improved so much, and I think everybody feels, "Oh, good," you know, it's a lot of...
Well, and I think it kind of helps sort of the street scheme to show...
Yeah, yeah.
Really, the only way that sign could be conforming is if you put it this way, right here on the corner.
Wait, which way?
This way.
Oh, well, that would be useful, yeah.
Right, but that's really the only way you could find it conforming, to try to do it.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so it's, it's seven and a half feet is the requested variance.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed.
Shall we deal with the questions, or you're not ready to do that?
Well, the sign's pretty clear-cut, and this picture is supposed to be the sitting area, you don't have to have better pictures than this.
Yeah, hers are all in, in technical, ours are black.
I've got color.
On the back, yeah.
Here's some color.
I think we have to deal with these separately.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
And you said this is gonna be, is this gonna, what type of canopy is it?
It's, it's gonna be black, it's a canvas awning, so it's black with...
Oh, yeah?
Thin stripes to match our logo.
With?
Like thin, like bronze-colored stripes.
Oh.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
I don't know, how come we didn't get a letter from Stacy? Lynn, you gonna get one from Stacy either?
I don't have anything from Stacy on this one.
The other setback is a foot and a half.
Yeah, that's what I get too. That's why I think, Ed, that we have to deal with them separately, because when you ask the questions, is it considerable? One is, one isn't.
Well, the front yard's setback doesn't appear to be considerable, and in addition to the fact that it's, that it's, it also goes on to a dead-end road.
For the, for the, the setback for the pergola is not considerable.
Yeah, one-point-five.
The pergola and the fence.
So this is three variances?
Three?
Three variances?
I only get two, what's, what's the third one that you're getting? I get that pergola...
Front yard setback, the pergola and the sign.
The, the front yard setback for the pergola is one and a half feet, variance. It's, what's required for that front yard setback is thirty-five feet, and they want to build it at thirty-three and a half.
Okay, maybe I'm not reading this properly, required zoning for front yard setback is thirty-five feet, the existing is thirty-three and a half.
Existing means that they've already put it up?
Oh, you've already put it up?
What?
Have you already put, put it up when it's... Yeah.
It's here, just talking about here, the existing setback.
So the existing setback already is encroaching on the required setback, correct?
Oh, so that's for the building, it's not for the pergola?
No, it's for the pergola, I figured the building, it is what it is, I figured that, all that stuff that I've already been taking care of.
Yeah, okay.
So basically, your building is supposed to be thirty-five feet off the property line, it's thirty-three and a half.
Yeah.
Okay, I was...
That's a move point.
That's a non-conforming...
Okay.
That's it.
That's what I was trying to say.
And I didn't understand it.
Now, if you want, you want setbacks for a new pergola...
So that's irrelevant to our decision.
Pergola of eight feet ten inches, and a new sign, two, two feet eight inches.
Well, no.
So the requesting...
She's just saying...
So the new pergola is eight foot ten.
And that's supposed to be how far?
And how, yeah, how far should it be?
Well, I assumed it was thirty-five feet, is that, that's what the...
That's, I don't know if it's a...
Is a pergola, yeah. It's not closed in on the sides, is it?
No.
No, we don't address pergolas.
No, I don't think we do either.
But the fence would be...
We don't even know what they are.
That's what you asked me last time, I was like, what is the pergola?
The fence would be...
Did it have one arbor?
Yes, right, right.
Fence is okay.
So the fence is okay?
We could even call it a bird gate.
Fence is okay, and the pergola is not a, a structure.
It is a structure, but it's not a permanent, necessarily a permanent.
I mean, it's not enclosed.
Did Stacy say you needed a variance for the pergola, or are you just doing that?
No, planning board did.
The planning board did?
The planning board said you needed a setback for the pergola.
You know what a pergola is, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, and it certainly is not a fence, let me go pull my file on this, I don't remember that...
Okay.
Come on, Jeff, do something, please. A pergola, it's a, it's not a pergola, it's a decorative tree.
Yeah, it's four stands and a...
Free standing.
Right.
Is it a year-round pergola?
Well, sure, it's a day there, yeah.
Okay, so...
Let me go look at my file, let me go pull my file. It's not a fence or a wall.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We have another two hours.
If we, I don't think anyone is going to be so fascinated by this, I mean, they, they really wanted you to record the early public hearing.
Maybe you could, we could just shut it off now and then end it. Maybe you could, we could just shut it off now and then end it.
When we come to the bill, put it back on?
Put it back on?
Is that possible?
Yeah.
It shouldn't be too much longer.
Okay, so the, the front yard setback is thirty-five feet. They're requesting a setback for the pergola to be eight foot, ten inches from the property line.
Correct.
Okay.
So instead of thirty-five feet, it's eight foot, ten.
Aye.
But this is not a.
So whatever the math is on that.
I'm assuming that the pergola is a permanent structure.
Permanent building, yeah.
And it sounds like the planning board is assuming that the pergola is a permanent structure.
I wouldn't, it, does it say that, Ed, that it is?
Give me two seconds to navigate.
Does it, does it have footings?
Yes, it would, yeah.
So does the sign have footings, doesn't it?
Sure, sure. It would be a permanent build and permanent structure, but it is not a.
Yeah, but we have a sign law, we don't have a pergola law.
It doesn't have walls and a roof, but that doesn't stop it.
And what's a roof made out of? Is it a canvas thing or?
No, it's just, um.
It's open squares.
It's lattice.
Just two, yeah, it's like a lattice.
It's like, it's wide lattice.
But what's it made out of?
Wood.
Wood, two by sixes.
Right.
And it's wide lattice, like the railings, you know?
Like.
Imagine the railings with a piece going through the middle. That's about how big they are.
Uh-huh, right.
That opening, so that plants can weave through them.
Right, the pergola has a, has a horizontal plane. Trellises are just vertical.
Okay, but the, the horizontal plane part, that's the, the trellisy part, right?
Right.
Right, right, that's a trellisy part. That's where the plants weave through and hang. Sometimes they hang lights from them, too.
Yes, yes.
Why do you joke now?
Do you find pergolas in there, Ed?
No.
No.
No. I think this was written before pergolas were invented.
This is the pergola.
Oh, yeah, right, right. So they're gonna get the vines to grow up there?
Sure, sure.
Probably.
Sure, like grapevines or whatever else.
Yeah, yeah. I can't see it as a permanent building, as a building under the building code. A really, you know.
It's not a shed.
No, it's not a shed.
A garden.
It's a garden structure, yeah.
But it has a level of permanence.
How tall is it?
It's probably.
Oh.
It's, it's twelve feet, I'll bet.
Yeah.
Nine, ten?
Wouldn't make sense for it to be twelve.
Six foot nine inches or sixteen inches, sixteen.
No, that's the plan, on the elevation sheet, which I think somebody has.
Okay. Not the color, let's try this one. Elevation, yes.
So, um.
Yes, here it is.
Yeah. Oops, sorry, excuse us.
No problem.
So, um.
Ten, ten feet, two and a quarter.
For the post, it's over ten feet and a post.
And then, I lost the picture.
So underneath the, the horizontal piece is eighty.
Okay, this is, this is what it looks like, so, so this is open air. This is all open air.
Yes.
Yeah, and there, th- those little railings go that way.
Mm-hmm. And that's only eight feet?
No, up to here, it's ten feet, ten and a quarter.
Yeah, but, but whether, you could hit your head, if you jumped up, you could hit your head on the eight foot bar.
Yes, you could.
Yeah, but they're gonna have wedding group photos in that pergola and seated around those banquettes in the pergola.
Right.
You know, it's just.
It's gonna be dignified, they're not gonna be dancing.
The other one that we did is a lot higher, but that, just for the scale, the space, that's what I would be.
Okay.
Okay.
Poor Jeff.
Of course, Phil.
We lost Jeff.
He's looking for a smile.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's, you know, it's not a building, but it does have a level of permanence and there will be people under it.
Yes, well, it so has, right.
So it does have to, I mean, certainly Stacy's gonna have to look at it for stability.
Right, she'll do a footing inspection, a framing inspection.
Right.
Footings and framing sounds rather structured.
F and F.
I wonder if it's considered a deck because of footings.
Because a deck you stand on.
I, I think, I think you should call it a garden structure.
Well, we don't address garden structures.
No, you don't.
The side must be, so do you mind?
Yeah.
People don't want their resource.
What have we got?
Well, from tracking, I, I was speaking, and you tried to help me here.
That's, that's a big task, that, right?
What, they, it says the planning board, the variance needed was for parking.
No, this says nothing about parking.
Uh, planning board says that they will need a variance for parking in the front, yeah, front, yeah, in Novella Skater in June, Twiliger Lane Site Plan. They will need to apply to TBA for variance on the parking.
No, I haven't touched a parking.
Uh, and they'll be lighting the pergola, but not into gazebo. George Lithgow suggested that.
Oh, there's no gazebo, that's out, so don't get, don't get confused.
Okay, this was in, this is the last tracking that I got from them.
What was the date on that?
That would be June ninth.
Yeah, no, I went to that once after that, which is, after gazebo.
I'm not any tracking on that, I'm asking for that. Let me go to the tracking sheets.
What are they considering with the pergola? Does it say?
This isn't the bridal gazebo, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
The gazebo's gone now.
It's not a gazebo.
But, but the word changed, but it is.
It's a bridal.
Pergola.
Correct.
Yeah.
I already know what that is, but it's not.
It's, but it's the bridal garden area.
Yes, no, okay, let me go see if that's on the tracking sheet.
But parking is on the tracking sheet?
No, well, you said it's not anymore. That, that was from, they said parking, they must have, they must have gotten an opinion?
Well, my, my guess, because my sheet that I signed said, special condition of zoning variance, front yard setback.
So they must have, Mike had must have gotten correction from George then, that parking was not needed.
Because we never, we never talked about.
Okay, so then that was, Mike Calamayo said that you would need a variance for parking in the front yard, which we considered a front yard.
But, but.
So they must have, George must have looked it down and approved it, and said variance was not needed.
The problem, you know, that Twiliger Lane, the front yard is gonna be the skinny end, yeah.
The front yard is not really the front.
Yeah, right.
I know.
Right. Yeah, I think it would have come up before this.
Says issues to be clarified.
Pergolas, no, I don't think so.
Drainage?
Well, how about something? Could we vote on the sign?
Oh, drainage is a question, yes.
Well, they need, I think they need to get started with plantings. So how can they do that without, without getting new pergola here?
Well, as soon as, as we, we can do that too, but we have to vote on these separately.
Okay, okay.
So let's get the sign off the table.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so, let's see.
I make a motion that we grant a variance for the sign of, can we do that, the one point five? No, no, I said, you know, seven point five.
Oh, we had to close the public hearing. Was there anyone from the public who wanted to say anything on the novella issue? Good.
I have no problem whatsoever.
I make a motion and we close the public hearing.
Sorry, second that.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion that given the positioning and the location of the sign, that we grant the variance of seven point five feet. Just seven and a half, half feet, actually.
For, I lost it.
For the sign.
Based on the location and what?
Yeah.
Based on the location and distance, distance from public access.
If you want to put us back on, we're voting.
You're on.
Oh, we're on, oh, okay.
I second that.
Have I been cursing? What?
I second that motion.
The sign.
All in favor of approving the sign variance?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Good.
Now, the pergola.
Now, the pergola.
Can, can you do the planning without putting the pergola in first?
Can you do the planting?
I can, don't think I can do anything until I get everything, sort of led to believe. That's what I told the planning board, I need to finish up, so I think.
Well, I understand, I just, I don't know how the pergola falls into zoning. What, what is the report?
Yeah, do we have any restrictions on pergolas? Do, do you know? This is the issue.
Ed?
I'm looking.
But, but do you want the phone?
Call Stacy?
I'll call Stacy, I have no problem. She likes hearing my voice.
Doesn't slide well. Find the phone thing, you need help?
All right, two five five six zero five.
You could call it a permanent, impermanent structure. Permanent, pervious.
Stacy's on the clock now. Hi Stacy, it's Ed again. So we're, we're trying to finalize novella here. The per, the pergola, what is that considered? What type of a structure? It's eight foot, ten inches off the property line. What, what is the requirement? Which is thirty-five feet. Okay, so she's looking for a twenty-six foot, twenty-six, two inches, so a pretty substantial amount. So that's just a, so it's considered a permanent structure?
Even though it's behind the fence? Oh, yes, I just.
Okay.
It is.
So could they change it to, right now it's a pergola, it's, doesn't have a roof. If we grant a variance, can they change it to a roof? Okay, depends on the variance we grant. We're basically granting them a variance for an open structure.
So if we specify pergola, it'll keep it open?
Okay, thank you. Hopefully that's it. All right, goodbye.
What answer did you get it?
It is a permanent structure and it has to meet front yard setback of thirty-five feet.
Wow.
So it's twenty-five, two inches.
Twenty-six, twenty-six, two.
Right.
Yeah, twenty-six, two.
So do you have any intentions of enclosing it?
What about roofing?
Can I see that picture again?
This, yeah, does roofing include, uh, roofing wouldn't make it not an open structure, correct?
No, it would still be an open structure because of the whole size of the building.
Right.
Yeah.
And here's, um.
All right, so this, this red edition, so if they were gonna roof it, it would most likely go within the.
Yeah.
Hey, we don't, there's no reason, we would ever have reason to roof it.
I could see why you would roof it.
If you're doing these weddings and you're.
Yeah, yeah.
It's big enough to, to bother.
Would you canopy it?
So, so you have this canopy that goes here. The canopy stops and it juts out into this opening.
No, it's best, best with a stitch line, yes, and that the.
And then that's, that's just.
Patty out, yeah.
Well, even if they were to canopy the roof, that's not permanent.
Sorry, canopy.
You know, if they.
I'm, I'm not worried about it either. I mean, if it was me, I'd be sitting there saying, I'm gonna roof this thing.
Yeah, I would too.
The main thing is, is that it's built sturdy, that it has the proper lumber, that it has the proper footings. Nothing's gonna fall on anybody. And Stacy's gonna ensure that when she inspects it.
Right.
There's no other structure back there, if beyond that is the thruway.
That's correct.
So I don't see any neighbor.
They only, it was referred to the ENCV, they got referred, Elsor Core Landscaping, they referred to it as gazebo pergola. And no, uh, ENCV offered no comments. They offered as just saying.
Yeah.
How? ENCV was fine with, ENCV was fine with the core landscaping and gazebo slab pergola.
Ten foot two with an eight foot two by six.
Eight foot two.
Ten, ten foot.
Ten foot two, how tall do you envision the landscaping being around this? Because on the drawing, it looks pretty tall.
It varies because she's got some birch trees in there, but the bulk of it is hydrangea height, so that's probably six feet-ish.
Or less.
So it's gonna be visible from the parking lot, the top of it?
Yes, yep, it'll be a few feet over the, the fence and what I like about it too is it also just creates additional buffer from the thruway once you drive onto the property. But yeah, you see that, to me, it's pretty. See the pretty tower pergola when you come in and it sort of.
They've got caps on the top, yeah, and a nice, nice looking.
In here, this is the entrance. This is a wall, the bar is here, and then that's the room, so you want it, so you wouldn't put this over here because it defeats your purpose of trap off.
Yeah, because this area right here is the bridal suite and sign.
So the pergola thing is gonna be primarily for the bride and groom, just maybe the attendants.
And private mortgage.
Yeah, and their bride and party, yeah, and not a bride and party, because it's not a large space.
Right.
It's only twelve feet.
It's not, it's not large at all.
So, uh, it's really just sort of like a special, you know, quiet area. I can't imagine anybody would stay there that long because you kind of want to get out to your guests and stuff, but.
And it's only for the bridal party.
Yeah.
It's only for the bridal party. It's not for crazy.
How many seats is it seating, six?
Um, it's one of these modular, like an L shape kind of thing.
Yeah.
So yeah, probably six or eight.
Yeah. So it has a special purpose for a special group. It's not accessed by everybody all night.
Right, no. No, and even with the bridal party, once the reception, once the cocktail hour is over, I can't, I'm never gonna go back there.
Ed, I keep losing the figures on the variance.
They will to go up.
The variance was twenty-six, two.
Twenty-six, two.
I'm telling you, they get smoked down, way down here by the loading dock.
Oh, nice.
Well, Liz said she used to be a smoker, she's.
I'll entertain a motion that we grant a twenty-six foot, two inch, uh, setback variance for the pergola.
Well, I think we should do it through the questions first.
Oh, I think you're absolutely right. Okay. Uh, we need you to respond to these. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of this area variance.
Do you see that? Kim, here.
Oh. Okay. No, I think it would make it better.
Okay, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance.
I think, um, it's, even as it is, it's a little bit small, so I think it's, we just couldn't get it any bigger, so I think it's.
I'm not quite sure that answer is relevant, but.
I think it'd be the other way.
Can you put this anywhere else on the property?
Oh, no. Not and have it next to the bridal suite.
Okay.
Where's your property line over here?
Yeah, it's, it's here.
And what's this over here? Is this garbage and stuff?
This is an air conditioner, and they have a loading dock here.
Loading dock, and where's your garbage and stuff?
Over here.
Okay.
We wanted to move that in because it was way outside.
So it couldn't be put over on that side, in that area at all. So, no. Whether the requested area variance is substantial.
I would say no.
Why would you say no? It's twenty-six.
It's twenty-six feet.
I know, visually it's so beautiful, that's.
But it's, you just have to answer honestly.
It's in honesty.
Yes.
Yes, otherwise we don't take you seriously at all. I mean, if it's, it's obviously substantial, can't still.
Is substantial from a percentage?
Right.
Of relief that you're looking for?
Quite substantial.
Okay, yes.
Yes. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No.
In fact, in fact, Kim?
In fact, it will have a positive effect.
Will have an adverse effect, it would be an improvement.
It would be an improvement.
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of an area variance?
I'm gonna say no, was not self-created, because I didn't know where else to put it.
You could have not put it anywhere.
I think almost frankly, personally, I've said this before, I think just about every area variance request is self-created. But, you know. Huh?
But it's on Earth, we answered.
But what?
But it's on Earth, we answered it.
Do you want to re-answer the question?
Uh, yes, it's self-created.
Which doesn't mean that we'll deny it, okay.
Do you have anything from Rob Shaller?
Uh-huh, oh.
Have you talked to him about this?
He's the Sucreate guy.
No, the owners, I guess, have spoken to him in the past.
Oh, that's interesting.
But they've spoken to this guy more, Jeff.
Right, but that doesn't really impact him as much as it does you.
Shaller.
I don't know for sure how much they.
He should be very happy.
He should be delighted.
Yes.
Well, I.
He got a letter.
Yeah, sure, he got the proximity letter.
That's right.
Neighbor, neighbor letter.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything from him, nor have we heard anything from anybody else.
And this was published.
This was published.
It'll be good business for him.
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure, they're gonna, where are they gonna stay?
Right next door.
The guests that come to the weddings.
I mean, even, there's not even gonna be any competition for another couple of years.
That's right, yeah.
That sounds good, shall I make a motion? Uh, due to the nature of the business, um, and the fact that it is, how does the neighborhood or district value recommend that we grant the variance?
I would just like to add a comment, because this is in a business district, and this is, as proposed, to enhance the business district.
Good.
Right.
I would second your motion.
Nicely done.
I would add that, that's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Okay. Nice work, yeah, oh, wait a second, we need a motion to adjourn?
No, we're not adjourned, we have another.
We got Phil. We have the chef.
I forgot.
We have the chef.
I'm so sorry.
Then we gotta do, yes?
I think we can table them.
We'll thank you again for your patience.
Yes, yes.
I designed somebody's house, I was pretty impressed, or no, nice. I was surprised with the way the tonal...
Oh, the DuBois, uh...
All right.
Rather grim, but I know it's gonna be a huge, huge...
How are you?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Kelly O'Donnell told me to, you should get here at seven, because you're at the top of the agenda.
Actually, tell us everyone, you would not.
I didn't see you on vacation, Phil.
Yeah, oh, dear.
That's right, Phil loves this stuff. How you learn a bunch of things tonight, did you not?
You live for it, right?
Actually, you know, you're gonna wanna take...
I was, I was, dear.
Okay.
Has everybody else looked at the property?
No, I have not, I'm the only one that has, did you, Ed?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay, I only have half of them, thank you. I don't even have anything besides this.
I don't have anything, mine's in...
Thank you.
I have this.
Wait, oh, there's DuBois.
I've, yeah...
Does the shed already exist?
I've got pictures.
Ah.
Yes, it's been there for like a house.
Yeah.
Really, is that big?
Oh, dear.
Yeah, I've just got this little...
There's only one set of pictures, I'm gonna read mine out.
House shed.
It's working, and I also have for you...
Gonna get rid of those cinder blocks, right?
Sure.
You've been out there, Linda?
What, that, no?
You've been out there?
No, I haven't.
So why are you handing this out?
How long have you known that? Since May.
So you just bought that?
Yeah, we just bought it in May, and just, these are for your, these are letters from all three neighbors, and it's in particular the one behind where it is, it is close.
Right, the, the one whose most impact.
Yeah, so...
And who is that?
That would be Zabrofsky, number nine, DuBois, and, um, so it's about a foot or two from, from his property line there, but it's, I mean, his house is way, you can't even see his house, it's...
So he's not objecting?
Whose house is this?
That's the shed.
Over here.
Oh, that's, um, Steve and Judy Ragul's.
It's rental, I know.
That's the house you were talking about, that's behind?
No, 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 behind is, is Tom Zabrofsky.
Okay, so you got a letter from the Ragul's?
From everybody.
Yeah.
And then on the other side is Vannett, but the one that's, it's close, the other ones are far.
If you look at this...
Take, take a look at this.
The one that's close to is Zabrofsky.
So, this number nineteen is his house.
Wait, where, where are you on this map? Not on this map.
You see number nineteen, so it's twenty-three, nineteen seventeen?
Twenty-three, nineteen seventeen.
Yeah, I, I, I see, here.
Oh, 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 okay.
Nineteen is his house.
Right, got it.
Number nine, this is number nine's property.
Gotcha.
What, the big piece?
Yeah, big piece.
Oh, I see, the nine is down there.
So seventeen and twenty-three aren't affected
Yeah.
by where the shed is located, it's the house number nine, and where, where is the house for number nine?
It's somewhere, it's somewhere back here, I can't even see it, all I see is woods, it's somewhere, somewhere, he's got...
Got a lollipop lot, wow.
He's Zabrofsky, did you say?
Uh, Tom, Tom, Tom Zabrofsky.
That's your house.
That's the shed, that's the back of the shed, that's my house out there, that's my house, yes.
And what's interesting is, this is all mowed, and when I went back there, I thought I was standing on his property, his property ends basically right where the cinder blocks are. And this is all mowed, all the way down, so all of these prop...
Oh, this guy takes care of, he has grass there and everything?
It's, it's all... It's mowed, but then there's all trees.
Just because the previous owner, Howell had mowed a little more onto the guy's land.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not even mowing that anymore, it's like the tree, I'm just going, I'm just gonna mow just enough to, like, so I can walk around, that's all.
Sure.
And, and like I said, Mr. Zabrofsky came over and, and he was, he couldn't care less, to be honest with you, so he wrote that letter.
Good, that's very nice. The only concern I have is, why do all those cinder blocks?
Because he, because Howell at one time had, I think a comp...
Howell was the earlier owner, the previous?
The previous owner, this was an estate sale, Mr. Howell passed away twelve years ago, and Mrs. Howell passed away last year.
I think.
So this was an estate sale from their children, and at one time he had a compost pile on the other guy's property, and those are left over from the compost, so he was just behind the shed, no problem, you know, moving them, but again, like I said, Mr. Zabrofsky was...
That's very nice, that's good.
And Phil, this here is on the side, so this is a side neighbor?
Yeah, the, the other side of that garden is Ragul.
Right, so this is the property line for the side?
No, no, it's, it's way past it, this is a good old garden, and it's on the other side of that garden, on the side, it's...
Okay, so you're well clear on the side setback anyway?
Here's the side, here's the side setbacks, it's the rear line setback.
A foot or two from, from the rear.
From the number nine, like that, ten?
Correct.
And number twenty-three has no issues, because they are...
No, there's a letter there from all three, yeah, yeah.
And the shed has been there for twenty-seven years.
About twenty years, yeah, well, by the way, I, I did, um, I could visually draw it for you.